Hello, Mr. Coco. Go ahead.
Mr. Holmes?
Thank you, Jane.
Sounding good. Thank you. Have a great night. Mr. Sasso?
Hi, Jane. Just checking to make sure you can hear me.
Yep, you sound good. Thank you very much. Ms. McCarthy?
Hi, testing. Thank you.
Yep, sounds good. All right, Mr. Halsey, we're going to, you're up next. Go ahead. Nope, that's not working. Not, it might, could it be a sound issue? Like, your volume might be all the way up on your mic? I'm not sure. But I think you should call our tech support folks. Their number's on the screen. You can, you can try again. Mr. Halsey, when you get a chance. All right. Ms. Linda Snow-Doxer, go ahead.
Hi, just checking to see if I can, you can hear me and thank you.
Yep, you sound good. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Ms. Scanlon, go ahead.
Just want to make sure you can hear me.
Yeah, very good. Yep. Mr. Ensminger, go ahead.
Hi, Jane. Are you there?
Yep, you sound very good. Yep, a little far away, but we can hear you.
Yeah, I'll get closer.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Yep.
Yep, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Mission Control. We will get started here in a few moments. We were, had a very friendly reminder that the day on the slide is incorrect. Today is October 21st, but it is not Monday anymore. So my apologies, I didn't change the whole slide, just one number. All right, and that is all. If you're having any sort of technical difficulties, please do give us a call. Please do write down 781-942-6663, so you have it if you need it. You could also email help@ci writting MA.us. And just as a reminder, please use the chat for points of order or procedural motions only. We are monitoring the chat for those things. And with that, Mr. Moderator.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. A quorum being present. This town meeting is called to order. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have just one brief announcement before we start. Because the Select Board needs a final answer on Article 9 by their Tuesday meeting, depending on how far we get tonight, there's likely to be a motion to take it out of order to make it the first item on Monday. There has been talk of tacking on an emergency preamble to the front of it, but it's, has been decided that that is unnecessary, as the Select Board only needs to know the result by Tuesday. With that, we will begin with Article 6, business under Article 6, Mr. Lulisher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think there's a point of order in the chat.
Yes. Okay, and let me take a look. Hold on a second. Point of order, Mr. Moderator, this is Ms. Binda. Ms. Binda?
Ms. Binda, go ahead and raise your hand. There we go. Go ahead, Ms. Binda.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I did not know you were going to say that, and I actually am moving to take Article 9 first out of order. While I understand, while I understand what you just said, I would like to point out too that Article 9 is very time-sensitive with the deadline only days away. Legal paperwork, if either of the two options to buy land passes, I'm sure the town lawyers and the other lawyers would appreciate the extra three to seven days to do legal paperwork. The other articles do not have the same time constraint, so it makes sense to take this up now, not last, or even not on Monday, as we could, first thing on Mondays, we could certainly go later than that. So I am respectfully requesting that this motion be put to town meeting for a vote.
Okay, so I assume you're making a motion to take Article 9 out of order and place it now?
Yes.
Yes, is there a second? A hand up anyway? Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, is there any discussion on taking that out of order?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. We have Megan Fiddler-Carry.
Ms. Fiddler-Carry?
Nope, sorry about that.
Okay, no problem. Anybody else?
Mr. Cool.
Mr. Cool?
Stephen Cool. And it's not spelled with a Y. In any case. Stephen Cool, Precinct 6. I do object to changing the order. Wow, you changed it. Thank you so much. But not the order. You changed my name, but not the order.
Okay.
That's my input. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Linda Snow-Doxer.
Is Snow-Doxer?
Hi, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I think I agree with Ms. Binda. I think that we always debate things very thoroughly and to make sure that we have time to debate this important motion, I think we should take it first today to make sure we have time to hear everybody's point of view. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion on taking Article 9 out of order.
Okay. Robert Coulter?
Mr. Coulter?
Yes, hi. I am open to taking it out of order. There's been a significant amount of email and discussion on this topic. In order to expedite it, could we just vote on the article first? And, and is there, maybe we could even take a straw poll? And if there's enough people willing to vote first before we go on for two or three hours of debate on this topic, maybe we could ask the town meeting members, would, if we want to just go straight to a vote, take a democratic approach to it, if 51% of the people want to just vote on the article out of order, then let's move forward.
Okay, not a bad idea, but not really in order. Any further discussion on, on taking it out of order?
Yes, Mr. Lippett.
Mr. Lippett?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Lippett, Precinct 7. I support Ms. Binda's motion. As I said on Monday night, I feel the whole purpose of special town meetings is to address items that are time-sensitive emergencies. Article 9 is the one item on this warrant that I believe is a time-sensitive emergency. I think we should have taken it first, and actually, I think it should have been the only article on the warrant, actually. Thank you very much.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, please review the chat.
The chat? Okay.
Question, does Article 6 need to be laid on the table first?
No, because we had no motion. The motion actually wasn't made. I was calling for it, but we hadn't actually started yet. Good, good point, though. Okay, further discussion on this?
Mr. Ensminger.
Mr. Ensminger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Ensminger, Precinct 7. I inquired of the town clerk, the moderator, and two members of the Select Board today whether or not they were prepared at this point to put up the exact motion that's being presented tonight. What we have been given online are two motion options, motion option A and B, each having two sub-options. So I would be totally confused what the motion is unless someone is prepared to put that all up on a single graphic, including all the funding sources that are being sought. And my question, before I can cast a vote to approve this taking out of order, is, is the Select Board or the proponent of this article prepared to do that right now?
Okay, before we go to that, the town clerk has asked to respond.
There is a new set of motions that have been uploaded onto the website as of about 6:30, 7 o'clock.
Well, can you give us a moment until we can look at it? Thank you for telling us. Okay, thank you. So I had.
Okay, okay. That does bring up a point, though. The, the presenters, I don't know if they are here yet. Are they ready to act tonight if we, if we move this out of order? Mr. Lulisher, do you have an answer to that? Do you know if they are prepared?
I don't know, Mr. Moderator. I have a very brief presentation. Obviously, it was two other folks that wanted to speak. I just don't know.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Finch, by the way, your hand was up earlier. If you, if I accidentally lowered your hand, go ahead and raise that again if you would still like to speak. Ms. Landry?
Ms. Landry?
Thank you very much. I would support taking this out of order. I think it would provide, it would, it would be very helpful to the board to have a very definitive answer on this before Tuesday's Select Board meeting. So I think taking it earlier rather than later would be preferable. And I, my understanding is that there is at least one presentation prepared for, for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Did you say we shoot your head, Sodhi?
Hello?
Oh. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I also support Ms. Binda's motion to take it out of order, as long as we have the presenters, if there were any, here. And I think discussion should follow as every other article before vote.
Okay, further discussion? Ms. Conley? Jane, I'm not hearing you. I don't know.
Sorry about that, I was muted. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Conway.
Hi, I just have a different point of view. I believe that during part of several of the last meetings, that the water tower also has to be discussed. So I don't think we should be going out of order. We should do it the way it's in the warrant and just give our time to everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Ms. Scanlon?
Ms. Scanlon?
Hi, thank you. Even though I'm not a town meeting member, I am a presenter on warrant Article 9. I just wanted to comment that I am prepared to discuss it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for chiming in. Okay, further discussion?
Mr. Bachi?
Mr. Bachi?
Hi, can you hear me, Alan?
Yep.
Hi, thank you. I just think this is highly inappropriate to send motions out, and I'm not blaming Laura for this, but I don't know where these motions came from, and to expect all of us to read them right now and then are the motions for this article that we're trying to take out of order? Because I am not comfortable with this.
Okay, further discussion?
Go ahead, Ms. Letario.
Ms. Letario? Ms. Letario?
Yes, thank you, Eileen Letario, Precinct 8. I would also support those who spoke against taking this out of order. I do think the delay in the lateness of new information is problematic here. I would agree that the water project should be discussed before, since that is really of a, it has been on the docket for some time now, and we should not flip over and take Article 9 out of order. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Maier, I just want to draw your attention to the chat, please.
Okay. Let's see. Oh, good point, Ms. Binda. I would, even though your name is coming up, again, ask that you give your name and your precinct when you speak. Okay, further discussion?
Mr. Ventura?
Yeah, I, I agree with the last two speakers.
Again, again, could I ask your?
Mark Ventura, Precinct 2. I agree with the last two speakers. There seems to be new information. We just got the link on the chat that we need to digest, as well as looking and prioritizing some of these articles as a whole, such as the water tower, which I think is more of a priority, and to the previous speaker's point, has been on the docket for some time now.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown?
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think, quite frankly, this is a dodge around the skirt of the seven-day waiting period if we have to go to the next series. I urge people not to vote for it. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Okay, Eric Gaffin.
Mr. Gaffin?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, Eric Gaffin, Precinct 4. Just, just to address the point about new information coming to light, one of the, one of the things that I've noticed over the years of being a town meeting member is quite often when you show up at the pack or day of, we've received information on special, special motions, on changes to motions. It's not new that we get new information about information. In fact, the, the whole process of town meeting revolves around making motions to, you know, making changes to motions and then debating them on the spot. This really shouldn't be that difficult for us to kind of talk about over the course of a number of hours. Everybody should have time. And as I read through what Laura sent, there doesn't seem to be, I'd like to hear what the changes are. If they're changed, like which of the special, of the articles have been changed. Because if it's, if there's a change to the other one, to any of the other ones, then the same argument could be made that those should be put off. But I support the motion. I don't understand strong pushback against taking something that is time-sensitive. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alicia Williams, Precinct 8. I actually am going to agree with Mr. Gaffin, where he said that if there could be somebody who could point out the changes, I don't know if we have a a version control where somebody can throw up the versions, that would be helpful to, you know, be able to process this information at the same time. We're spending two, we're looking to spend $2.25 million, and I don't want to just throw caution to the wind and not digest what was sent. You know, it's a grand scale of money, so I'm going to vote no to moving this motion out of order and hope that we can get one more day to sort of digest and think about what is going on. Thank you.
Mr. Lulisher, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In the motions that were sent out a week ago to town meeting on Article 9, there was a lot of, a few little twists and turns. There were a lot of possible amendments and a lot of suggested motions. What the town clerk has sent out just a little while ago is the simplest motion that we would start with. It is just to borrow $2.25 million of debt and a slightly higher amount than that to buy five lots. So we have to start somewhere, and that's where, that's what the default motion would be. It's identical to what you had in your packet, except what was in your packet previously had a lot of other, if you will, options or twists and turns, depending on what other amendments might be offered.
Okay, there's a point of, point of order. Actually, another question. What happened to the one-lot motion? Mr. Lulisher, do you want to comment on that? There was a possibility of a five-lot motion and a one-lot motion?
There is, and I, I think that, you know, the business in front of town meeting has the five-lot option. If someone wants to, should that option fail, there could be a motion made to buy one lot. And, you know, we're prepared to offer that as a, as a second motion, if you will. But it didn't seem appropriate after a discussion with the moderator to have two motions on the floor at the same time. That would just be very confusing.
Thank you. Further discussion on taking the article out of order?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Just to make a note, there are 23 hands up right now.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Coco?
Mr. Coco? Mr. Coco? Okay, do we have another one?
Here he is.
Oh, you have him, okay.
Am I still on?
You're on.
Okay, thanks. I'm, I'm really uncomfortable taking this motion out of order because it's so important. And it seems like we're doing something very important on the fly, with maybe language changes and motions which are still incomplete. So I would like to vote no against taking it out of order. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion on taking the article out of order?
Mr. Moderator, if a previous person needs to clarify their position, do they need to wait until all the other people?
Yeah, this is, this is a simple yes or no, so I'd like to get through as many people as we can.
Okay, Mr. Halsey? Let's see if your mic works.
Can you hear me, Jane?
Yes.
Oh. Success, thank you. You know, I find it interesting that people, two people with opposing views on the motion both come back to the same question, and that is, with a late-breaking change, how do we really sort that? You know, the town managers helped us with that, and so that seems to be less of an issue for me. But I will say this. We seem to be, you know, scurrying around to bring something of great magnitude out of order and before this body. I think that that is generally inappropriate. And when we stop to think about those things that are going to be left waiting, it has been pointed out that we've got a very important issue in front of us and, you know, in a preceding warrant, and that has to do with the, with the long-awaited solution to the water tower, which has now been pending for five years. Okay, so I think that it's more appropriate for us to follow the order. It has been pointed out by several speakers that the property, our entry into the real estate business is not one we're, we're necessarily involved with on a regular basis. And town meeting members having the time to digest and understand all the nuances, I think, is much more important. Is someone else in the middle of my?
Yeah, there's something else is coming through here.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
That, you know, that seems to be no shock to me, to be honest with you. But let's, so for the record, I feel very strongly that we should not take Article 9 out of order. And I will vote appropriately.
Okay, we've had a couple of points of order saying these are off-topic. I do not believe they are. I think people are questioning why this would be first over some of the other ones. So I do think that that is on topic. Further discussion on changing the order?
Carolyn Whiting?
Ms. Whiting?
Thank you, Carolyn Whiting, Precinct 7. And I agree that this is time-sensitive and that we should therefore take it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Karen Herrick? Go ahead, Miss Herrick.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I did have a point of order earlier, if you can hear me. I think I would like speakers to be very careful not to veer off the motion in front of us and start discussing other warrant articles, however worthy they may be, and that was the point of my point of order. And so to just set some context for town meeting, this same motion was brought forward by a town meeting member on Monday. It was robustly debated by members of FinCom, members of the Select Board, town moderator, town clerk, and town manager. It was decided at that time that it was very important for the Finance Committee to have a recommendation to bring to you tonight. So I would like to set that context that this is not rushed. This is not late-breaking. This was brought up earlier, and the moderator runs town meetings, so the decision was reached. We now have a recommendation from the Finance Committee. I will support this motion. This is the most time-sensitive article before the special town meeting and the primary, if not one of the primary reasons for this special town meeting. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, two points. First, again, I ask everybody to give their name and their precinct. And second, I want to make it clear that this is town meeting's decision, not the chair's. Further discussion?
Mr. Ross?
Mr. Ross?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Ed Ross, Precinct 5, and I'm, but I'm actually speaking as FinCom Chair. I just wanted to be able to inform town meeting that we are prepared to, to speak to to Article 9 this evening. We've had discussion on it as of last night and are prepared to be able to take it up now. And just one other point, and maybe this is as, as, as a precinct member, we can already tell, everyone's already had an opinion on it anyways. I think this, you know, the, the debate up until this point proves that people are ready to be able to speak about it anyways, so let's just take it off the table.
Okay, I have one point of order asking, does this become effective immediately or seven days after shiny die? Uh, the, yeah, the true answer is it's seven days later, but two, at least two members of the Select Board have said, once they know the decision, the, the formality of the finality of it isn't so important, but they can begin making their discussions on Tuesday. That is the answer to that question. Further discussion.
Michael Giaccoloni.
Mr. Giaccoloni?
Uh, Michael Giaccoloni, Precinct Five. Um, I too do not want to take this article out of order, uh, with the new information that's come in. Um, there's plenty of things that people need to digest on these changes. We certainly debate things enough to understand that. And, uh, with everything else that's going on, with all the other important articles, um, I, I just think we need time to digest this new information.
Thank you. Further discussion.
Mr. Moderator, please note there's a point of information from John Land, John Arena regarding, are the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting available from last night? They are not, okay.
We have an, they are not, okay. Further discussion.
Mr. Clark.
Mr. Clark.
Hi, I'm Jason Clark, Precinct Three. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, so as I understand it, uh, can you hear me, by the way?
Yes.
Okay, so as I understand it, this is a special town meeting and the entire point of the special town meeting, the reason I'm sitting here for multiple nights before we do this again in just a month from now, is to discuss, is to consider this motion before the deadline next week. All of these other warrants could be dealt with at the November meeting, and frankly, I still don't understand why we're not doing that, but based on long experience with town meeting, I can't think of something I want less than to try to have this discussion under pressure on Monday. From what the town managers told us, it seems like this late breaking change is actually less complicated than the previous motions. And as for digesting everything, we all know we're going to be discussing this for the next three hours. We've already discussed even moving it for half an hour. And so I'm not worried about being able to read these motions and have my discussion. And as the last speaker said, I think everyone already knows what they want to say about this, so I'm ready to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Mr. Lulishaw.
And thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, I do want to point out to town meeting that both Articles Six and Seven are time-sensitive. They could not wait to November town reading. And the water article, uh, Article Seven was the original reason last, uh, June while we started discussing a special town meeting. Um, I'm not saying the Meadowbrook issue is not important. It is. It is also time-sensitive, but just to set the record straight.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I just want to make a note, uh, for the attendees that there are 23 hands up. Mr. John Sullivan.
Mrs. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Sullivan, Precinct Seven. I'd like to move the question.
Okay, that is a non-debatable motion. Is there a second? Yes, I have a second. Okay, uh, could we have a poll up? All those in favor of ending debate? Well, you'll vote yes, and if, if not, you vote no. Okay, and there's the poll. This requires a two-thirds vote. No, I, I did the poll. Oh, oh, wait, wait, wait and see what the, uh, resulted.
Mr. Moderator, I am ending the poll.
Okay.
And it's 142 to 24.
142 in the affirmative, 24 in the negative, that, uh,
meets town, it does meet two-thirds.
Meets the threshold, so we have moved the question, we have ended debate. We will now go, uh, straight to the vote on whether or not to take Article Nine out of order. Again, this is only a majority vote. Could we have a poll put up? Vote yes if you want to take Article Nine out of order and no if you do not. And there's the poll.
I just know. Too late. Mr. Moderator, I'm ending the poll.
Okay.
And it's 91 to 74.
91 to 74, the motion carries, so we will now take Article Nine out of order. So business under Article Nine, uh, I'm not sure who is making the presentation.
I'm Alan, I will start.
Okay, Mr. Lulishaw.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The first order of business, let me just share that motion so everyone is completely clear of what we're doing. This article is seeking debt authorization to borrow 2.25 million uh, to purchase five lots from Meadowbrook and to take, uh, for the Select Board to enter into any and all agreements that are necessary. The total cost is slightly more than that. Um, the rest of that will be incidental and, and be used from free cash. So I just wanted to make sure everyone could see the motion. Uh, what was in the packet had this, but it also had lots of other, as I said, um, kind of twists and turns.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, there's a point of order in the chat.
Okay, I'm sorry, the point of order had disappeared when I, when the presentation went up.
Yeah, it was just, yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Sanford, your point of order?
Ms. Sanford, please raise your hand, we can find you. There we go. Go ahead, Ms. Sanford.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry about that. Um, Mr. Moderator, um, before we start the discussion on this, I had sent an email to the Select Board, and I would just like to, um, kind of summarize the request for all Select Board members to indicate if they have any conflicts of interest or personal relationships with the developer who stands to gain from purchasing this land if town meeting chooses not to purchase it. And also, could you please have them indicate whether or not they have supported this article and their Select Board role when they voted? Um, I think it's really important for the body of town meeting to know where all the Select Board members stand in their potential conflict of interest and any town meeting members who also may have a conflict of interest before we engage in the discussion.
Okay, uh, Rule 11 of our town, uh, meeting rules in the bylaws indicate that anybody who speaks who has a conflict would, uh, is, is to divulge that before speaking. So we already have it in the bylaws. Okay, uh,
That will happen, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Okay, that's wonderful, because I've had a lot of constituents reach out to me with some real concerns. Thank you.
Okay, further, okay, um, what else have we got for, we have a Conservation Commission report?
I'll read our presentation if you'd like.
I am so sorry. Yes, Mr. Lulishaw.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's very, very brief. Um, hopefully everyone can see a screen, um, shared. This is the land area right here, Grove Street, Stroud Ave, which is on the way into the compost center as well as the town forest. More specifically, these are the five lots, um, under this motion, all five. The total purchase price just over 2.25 million dollars. Um, I'm now prepared to share a presentation, uh, from Anika Scanlon if she's ready.
Okay. Ms. Scanlon?
Here she is. Go ahead, Ms. Scanlon.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for, um, letting me present tonight. I'll try to be brief. The warrant article you will see in my presentation is the old one, so, um, my apologies. I did not, um, see the more recent updates this evening. The basic principle here is this Meadowbrook land was Chapter 61 land, which puts the town in the position of being able to offer first right of refusal to purchase the land. Now, the money could come from a number of different places. It could come from the town or it could come from other funding sources. Um, thank you. Next slide. If you're ready. Thank you. Um, this was the plan given to the Select Board, uh, for the lots. They're on Grove Street. They're between Meadowbrook Golf Club and the conservation, and the town forest land. You can see on the left, um, there's been a wetland area mapped out. This plan has not come before conservation, so these lines have not been verified. So these can be considered approximate wetland boundaries at this point. Thank you. Next slide. Appreciate that. Um, the town has already, in its wisdom in the past, done some historic planning for this land. There are two town documents. There are two town documents, the Town Forest Natural Resource Inventory and the Open Space and Recreation Plan back from 2013 that talk about the parking issue, which I think we all know about, and the conflicts that arise with crowding, um, mixed traffic, mixed populations, and also the proximity, how close sensitive natural habitats are to this entrance to town forest. Next slide, please. Thank you. So among this area, this end of Grove Street and Down Stroud Ave, which you can see as that orange, sort of back, that orange L, uh, in the inset map, there are sensitive habitats right off the curb, right off the pavement. There's a number of vernal pools, there's wetlands, um, some vernal pools are, um, are estimated, some vernal pools are officially certified. There is also a endangered species habitat or an N H E S P priority habitat area for an, at least one endangered species that uses all of this upland as its living space before it goes to the vernal pool in the spring for breeding. So the, the plan highlighted, these two plans highlighted that lack of parking in, uh, town forest is a major issue. Next slide, please. Thank you. So another sort of future vision these old plans had was to tell the town, give the town as a planning document some perspective on men to go. So these plans mentioned that the town should be vigilant in the event that Chapter 61 land becomes available. Also, the number one, the first recommendation in the Natural Resources Inventory Report is to improve the parking and access to town forest along that Stroud Ave entrance. The opportunity to acquire Chapter 61 land wasn't available at the time of that report, but it was mentioned in that report that we should stay vigilant and look out for it to solve a longstanding problem. Next slide, please. Thank you. The plan, the plans we've, we have on record do discuss some alternative option of creating parking at the end of Stroud Ave. However, the Natural Resources Inventory Report, which was authored by Mass Audubon, two scientists hired by Mass Audubon with our tax dollars, to come up with a scientifically defensible evaluation of all the resources, they discouraged use of parking at the end of Stroud Ave. Keeping in mind proximity of sensitive receptors, including endangered species habitats. And the plan, the plans state that exploring alternatives that do not include the use of parking at the end of Stroud Ave or some sort of road in and out should, is, is, that that should be off the table for the purposes of protecting the wildlife that was documented there. You'll also see on this plan that there's a number of certified vernal pools in the area. Next slide, please. Thank you. This map shows the approximate area of lots one through five. The yellow-hatched area is the estimated habitat for the endangered species. That's the range of their habitat. The compost area is shown, and there's also a forest trail loop shown. You can see in the bottom right, there's the Meadowbrook driving range. One thing I wanted to point out here was whether it's mapped on a town trail marked or not, there is an existing walking path shown and labeled in black that can divert, that, that doesn't include, you know, it's separate from Stroud Ave, and it can connect this area of these lots with the town forest existing trail. Next slide, please. This slide goes a little bit further into future options, and I, I welcome the opportunity to speak before you tonight. Um, and I thank you for the opportunity because it's rare that we have a chance to buy back land and hold it in protection. There've been a number of, of open forested sections of land in the last 10 years that have eaten up forested lots in town. There's Johnson Woods, there's Veterans Way. There's a number of other lots that have just been developed. And this is one rare opportunity the town has to buy conservation land. So the, the scenarios here, you know, I think a lot of the exact what can we do with the land is not 100% part of tonight's discussion. I would like to emphasize that this, that what you see before you here is one opportunity.
Ms. Scanlon, can I interrupt for just a second? We have a point of order. Mr. Bachi?
Mr. Bachi, go ahead and raise your hand.
Hi, thank you. I, I hope the speaker, uh, states, because she hasn't already, that that path is not on town land. Because if she doesn't state that very soon, she is misleading everyone. Thank you.
Ms. Scanlon? You can continue.
Thank you, Mr. Bachi. I think it's fairly clear from the maps that you see that portion of it is and a portion of it isn't. Um, which is why, um, underneath the two options listed on the right, it says, obtain an easement for the existing path. It would be useful regardless of whether a parking lot goes in on Lot One or on Lot Five. So those were the two options we were suggesting. This is not written in stone. This is here for incentive to tell the town, these are some things that could be done with the land and reasons why it's in our interests to acquire the land. So if you don't mind, the next slide.
Okay, um, I have, I have one more point of order. Uh, Mr. Feedo?
Mr. Feedo, go ahead and raise your hand, please. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Feedo.
Thank you. Um, my point of order is, my understanding is before any town
Thank you. My point of order is my understanding is before any town meeting member is supposed to speak per Rule 11. They're supposed to disclose whether they have any conflicts of interest. Mr. Bachi didn't do that. So I'd ask that he do that.
Well, he was making a point of order, but yes, point taken. Okay, Ms. Scanlon, continue, but you are up to your time limit. Are you close to the end?
Thank you. I'm on the last slide.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to report to town meeting that Conservation voted on a number of motions at our last meeting. And we voted in favor of all three motions. The first was to recommend that town meeting approve exercising the right of first refusal for the five lots. The second motion was in the event that the first motion, that that did not happen before town meeting, that if that didn't happen, an alternative to that would be to purchase Lot 5. And that was five in favor. The third motion, which doesn't necessarily deal with town meeting, it's more the town management, is a motion to request that the town pursue an easement between Lot 5 and the trail loop with Meadowbrook to cover the area of the current trail. To connect Lot 5 or Lot 1 through Lot 5 with the existing forest trails. And with that, I will wait for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a FinCom report. Mr. Ross?
Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Thanks, Shane. Thanks, Mr. Moderator. On our, okay, so on our meeting on last night, October 20th, FinCom voted on all of the previous iterations that were in the, that were in the motion. I'll only speak to the one that's in the motion right now. So as it relates to the purchase of the five lots from Meadowbrook, FinCom voted one in favor and seven against to, on, on that specific motion. We had two subsequent motions that we voted on last night as it related to funding that I think are important and I'd like to share. We had one motion that we discussed and voted on as it related to funding using using debt entirely. We voted three in favor and five against for, for that funding option. And then finally, we voted on an option to fund one and a half million dollars of debt with the remainder from free cash. And that motion carried seven votes in favor and one vote against. The only other piece that I'll, that I'll mention that was pertinent to a FinCom report is that those were the only two funding options that we discussed last night. There were no other options to talk about any other types of state or federal grants that could be used. And I believe that's, you know, kind of more given the time sensitivity. But those were not options that we were able to discuss last night or were on the table. But, and I, and Mr. Moderator, if, if we do pursue any other kind of parts of this, I have other FinCom reports that I can share.
Thank you very much. Town Forest Committee, I don't believe it. Is it Mr. Sullivan or Mr. Hable? Which, which of you is prepared to do that? Mr. Hable, okay?
Go ahead, Mr. Hable.
Yes, you are.
So I can be brief and thank you for your time. Ms. Scanlon already covered a lot of the Town Forest Committee's concerns about endangered species. What we've learned in practice, when we do pine tree thinning in the forest, it has to be done in February, late February, because you can't run equipment on the road when salamanders are coming out. So in the long run, using the current Stroud Ave system isn't ideal because the peak use of the town forest generally coincides with the compost usage. So it makes kind of a hazardous situation. So without any of these land purchases, then the status quo would remain. The Town Forest Committee voted five to nothing to purchase all five lots and voted five to nothing to purchase one in the event that the town can't afford to purchase five. We agree that the plan of using a separate entrance away from the compost area would be better for everyone. Preserving the land is not only good in general, but it's even more important because it abuts the existing town forest. Any chance you get to enlarge a conservation area is better than getting a separate parcel somewhere else that's isolated from wildlife. I can't think of any other concerns that weren't covered by Ms. Scanlon.
Mr. Hable, we did have one question. Someone asked if you could repeat the last Pete about the votes again.
Five to nothing in favor of land purchase, five to nothing in favor of purchasing one lot if five lots can't be purchased.
Thank you. Okay, you all set?
I just muted him. Sorry, Mr. Hable. If you need to say more, please unmute yourself. Oh, he's good.
Okay, further discussion.
All right, Mr. Moderator, we have David Panett.
Mr. Panett. Mr. Panett.
Okay, you can't hear me now?
You can.
Okay, David Panett, Precinct 1. One of the big things that comes out about this, and everyone's talking about buying land and attaching it to this town forest and a parking area, et cetera. Any, any purchase of any work that's done on this land, that would have to be handicap accessible. If you look at the, the topography of that land as it exists now, if you were to make it a parking area, any kind of access to the town forest, I don't see how without a very significant expense I could ever be made handicap accessible. So I really don't think that this is the right way to go in purchasing these lots for access to the town forest just for that cause. But I have also other concerns as well. But I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Further discussion.
Mr. Moderator, it looks like Ms. Scanlon wants to respond to that.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the chance to respond to that. I actually, I, I worked with Dave on conservation and I respect him highly. I do want to just point out as, as a bit of information, there's, there are a number of conservation areas that do have handicap accessibility right now. And for example, Matera Cabin. Not sure about his point. I can neither confirm nor deny his point about that. But I do want to emphasize that not all trails in Redding are handicap access right now. There are, there is at least one. And I know the Trails Committee and the volunteers have been working to increase that capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion.
Ms. Jolson.
Ms. Jolson?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Oh, okay. Further discussion.
Mr. Manginello.
Mr. Manginello.
Good evening. Gaetano Manginello, Precinct 2. I had placed a point of information in the chat and specifically I would like Town Council to weigh in and determine if I am in fact allowed to vote on this article and share my opinion as I am the potential suitor to buy should the town not enact their Chapter 61 right.
Are you a town meeting member?
I am.
Yes, you are allowed to speak. You have, you have just disclosed your connection, so you are allowed to speak.
Mr. Moderator, I would also like Town Council to weigh in if I am allowed to vote on this article.
Mr. Moderator, the Town Council has indicated in the chat she's willing to make a comment.
Okay. Ms. Freed?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, the moderator is correct in this case. You are permitted to share your opinion on this matter and vote, provided you comply with Rule 11 and disclose any interest that you may have in the property.
Thank you. Further discussion.
Marian Downing.
Ms. Downing.
Hi, thank you. Just, I'm Precinct 3 at present, soon to be 4. I know Ed Ross spoke on behalf of FinCom, so what I'm saying is as a FinCom member that we, we voted on something very different last night. Ed correctly stated, we did not support this article. And we did support the one lot option. So just as an aside, it's very disappointing that town meeting is not being given that option as well. What I wanted to speak to was some of the statements given in the presentation about, and in some of the information sent to town meeting members about how this is one of the last wooded lots that we can get or that it's very important. It just feels like it's a lot of money for not much land. And maybe Conservation Commission can, can speak to this. In looking at the Conservation Commission website, there's another forested area that I believe is Chapter 61 land that if its use has changed, and it looks like that's what's going to be happening, it will be coming up before the Select Board soon. And I feel like saving the kind of money we would spend on this for much more land in a different area would be better. This, this motion is relating to add, you know, 2.4 acres to a town forest that's over 300 acres. I understand there is a part to add parking and that is what, you know, FinCom overwhelmingly supported last night. But the town just does not even have a use or an idea for the other land other than, well, you know, it's, it's wetlands and forested land. We need to get it, I guess, at any cost. And if people are interested, 1310 Main Street, which abuts Kirchian Woods, which is about 50 acres, is a nine acre plot that a builder all from May to the present has been doing wetlands delineation on. That property, like the .6 acre sister parcel at 1310, needs to come before the town for a right of first refusal. The .6 acres came up in 2019. No public hearing on that, by the way, for the Select Board. And four Select Board members voted not to exercise the right for that .6 acre. I guess Concom and Town Forest didn't think the wetlands over there were important to preserve. So I just want to tell meeting members to know that there will be, unless something odd happens, there's going to be other land that comes up. And we should all remember that a couple of years ago, we bought, you know, a couple of dozen acres over by Burbank that we've done nothing with, though we did buy it for a lot, lot less money. So I do not support this.
Okay. We have a point of order?
Am I to stop speaking?
Just for a second. You still have the floor, but Ms. Binder has a point of order.
Go ahead, Ms. Binder.
Thank you. We are discussing this property, not, not other properties and not a property that has, nothing's come before the Select Board. Thank you.
The reason, the reason, Ms. Binder, why I brought that up is because one of the rationales that was posted, the letter from the town forest, was implying that we, we're not going to get this chance to get other property. And I wanted people to be aware that, yes, that these kinds of things do come up. They came up a couple of years ago. They came up even in 2019. They're going to come up again. So I, I would support the one parking lot option, which FinCom voted on, which isn't being presented to town meeting. But I just wanted people to understand that this is not a one-shot dare. There will be other things come up and we don't even know what we want to do with this property other, other than the parking. So I'm, I'm very confused about such a big investment on this land with no plans for it. Thank you.
Further discussion.
Kevin Leet.
Mr. Leet.
Hi, thank you very much. Kevin Leet, Precinct 1. Two main points. First off, I think the point of getting the land is for conservation. First off and foremost, and to the last speaker's point about these things come up all the time. It's not really true. They come up when adjacent to existing conservation land. So I think that's a key point to remember here for those who care about conservation, like the Commission does. Secondly, I would like to maybe ask a question as to whether or not it makes sense at this point to have a secondary option for the one plot. Should, for whatever reason, we just, somebody called for a vote early, as happened on Monday, while a bunch of people still have their hands up, just to make sure that once a vote is taken, there is a secondary option given to town meeting.
Okay, to answer that, technically it is legal to have a second motion under this article, which was talked about earlier in the week, I believe. Whether that's planned or not, you, we could talk to the Board of Select, Select Board. But it is, is technically possible to do that.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Jennifer Hillary. Go ahead, Ms. Hillary. Go ahead, Ms. Hillary.
Ms. Hillary? Ms. Hillary? All right, we'll move on to the next one.
Jean Borowski. Go ahead.
Ms. Borowski?
Hi, I didn't realize my hand was raised. I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. Further discussion.
Okay. Janice Jones.
Ms. Jones? Ms. Jones? Are we having a problem or is it just bad luck?
She's not unmuting, so she doesn't realize her hand was up. Should I remove permission to talk?
Yeah, Ms. Jones, if you can hear us, did you want to unmute? Did you want to speak?
I already unmuted.
Oh, you already did. Okay, then we'll move on.
Our next person is Michelle Sanfi.
Ms. Sanfi?
I have no idea. I apologize. I did not know my hand was up.
Okay, next.
Mr. Carnahan.
Mr. Carnahan.
Thank you. Joe Carnahan, Precinct 6. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 6. I'm also a member of the Conservation Commission. I'd like to speak in favor of purchasing this land. In particular, I'd like to highlight the conservation value of Lot 5 in particular. As Chair Scanlon said, the town previously considered developing the old water treatment plant, but expanding Stroud Ave to do so would damage the habitats along that road. It seems like there's practically universal agreement that the town forest needs a proper parking area. And so acquiring Lot 5 would protect a sensitive area elsewhere by, you know, obviating the need to, to build parking there. I want to speak to a couple of questions that people have asked me before the meeting. First, I've heard the concern that we haven't done due diligence to evaluate and articulate the possible uses of land. I agree completely, and I think that's exactly why we should buy it. Given the time limit imposed by Chapter 61, the only way to do that investigation thoroughly and have those conversations to buy the land and take the time that deserves to decide. Or sorry, the only way to have the conversations is to take the, is to buy the land and then take the time. And at that point, we could decide to sell any parts of the land that we determine are not worth the cost. I've also heard concern the land has not been formally appraised and we are unsure of its value. And I have to ask, when has the value of property in Redding ever gone down? We're talking about land between a forest and a golf course. I believe its value as residential property is obvious. And really, the only question is, does it have value to the town for other purposes? And that's what we need time to consider. Third, there's the question of 1310 Main Street, which Ms. Downing brought up. That land, I understand, is no longer Chapter 61. That, I'm not familiar with the details of the process, but I learned today from
This is, this is varying from the motion before us.
Okay, well, so if, if the presence of that, if the availability of land is an argument against this motion, I should point out that land is not available. So, and then, let's see. Finally, for people saying we have no money, we can't afford this. Given the Department of Revenue's recognition of our town's free cash balance of $17.8 million, the statement, "We have no money" is just factually not true. We should debate what's the right use of that money. We have to give ourselves time for those debates. And that's exactly why we should, I think we should And that's exactly why we should, I think we should do the prudent thing here, buy the land, have the discussion, and then let town meeting make a better informed decision about whether to keep the land or sell it in the future. If we pass up this opportunity now, it will never be available to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Oh, I, I think you're muted.
Very much. Mr. Moderator, just to let folks know, there are twenty-eight hands raised right now. The next speaker is Ms. Wiggins.
Ms. Wiggins.
Hi, Teresa Wiggins, uh, precinct eight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, look, I, I'm in, um, I firmly believe that we should purchase this land. Um, we are living through an environmental crisis that's getting worse by the minute. Um, this environmental crisis is one that our children and our grandchildren are inheriting. And we have a rare opportunity to purchase this land and do something to protect our environment here in Reading. Um, this purchase is recommended by the Conservation Committee, the Town Forest, and Mass Audubon, who, whose mission is to, uh, to recognize that land is valued as essential to the quality of life in the Commonwealth and, uh, that, the, the idea that we would pass up this opportunity, um, is troubling to me. So I really firmly, uh, I'll be, I'll be voting in favor of purchasing this land. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. John Sullivan.
Mr. John Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Sullivan, precinct seven. Uh, I'm also a member of the Conservation Commission since January of two thousand twenty. I'd like to speak to the potential conservation value of the five lots in question and to encourage my fellow town meeting members to vote in support, uh, to purchase these lots. Uh, just for background, uh, as an environmental consultant, I've assessed the value of potential habitat conservation areas and have presented to the Ecological Society of America on methodology for assessing and prioritizing potential conservation sites from a landscape ecology perspective.
Uh, Mr. Sullivan, could you hold on just a second? We've had two comments that we cannot hear you. Is there, uh?
I can hear him because I, my volume is up, um, but if you can get closer to your microphone, Mr. Sullivan,
Okay.
and project, that might be helpful.
I, I have mine way up too, so probably you don't have a problem. So you could, uh, maybe speak a little louder or a little closer to the microphone. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Continue.
Can you guys hear me now?
Sounds about the same.
Really?
Yeah.
Put my headphones back on. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Sullivan, precinct seven, and a member of the Conservation Commission. I'd like to speak to the potential conservation value of the five lots in question and to encourage my fellow town meeting members to vote in support of the purchase of these lots. For background, as an environmental consultant, I've assessed the value of potential habitat conservation areas and have presented to the Ecological Society of America on methodology for assessing and prioritizing potential conservation sites from a landscape ecology perspective. I can still determine the potential conservation value of a parcel of land, but the two that are always at the top of the list are the amount of habitat the parcel contains and the quality of that habitat. Adding these lots will expand the amount of contiguous area in, in town-owned land and, all things being equal, more protected habitat is ecologically better than less. In addition to the amount of habitat protected in town, purchasing these lots will very likely improve the quality of that habitat, not just on the two and a half acres in question, but the portion of the town forest that abuts Grove Street all the way down to Forest Circle. The current parking situation along Grove Street means that most, if not all, the parking for this entrance to the town forest is extremely close to ecologically important wetlands. Parking on the side of the road leads to increased erosion and runoff into these areas. Moving some or all of that parking to the proposed lot will reduce the stressors, improve the quality of the habitat on the land that the town already owns. In addition to habitat and conservation benefits these parcels could provide, protected open space has a myriad of social, economic, and health benefits. The average tree produces over twelve hundred dollars in air pollution control every year. Exposure to forested areas has, has been shown to increase students' test scores and graduation rates and correlates with decreases in anxiety and depression. I think that this is a rare opportunity for the town, not only to increase its protected natural areas, but also to improve what we already own. I'd hate to see us miss this opportunity, as I don't think we'll see another chance like this for some time. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan, I called away for just a second. Are you, will you complete?
I am, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the town council would like to, uh, address the, um, the notion of the two motions, Ms. Freed?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to speak to the select board's vote, uh, I guess now, uh, over a week ago. At that meeting, they voted to present both options, that is, acquiring all five lots and acquiring Lot Five only to town meeting. The intent of the select board was that if the motion that's currently on the floor to acquire all five lots fails, that a second motion would then be presented to acquire Lot Five only. Just wanted to add that point of clarification.
Thank you very much. Further discussion?
Jason Clark, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Clark?
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I'll say upfront, I'm-
Could you, could you state your name in precinct?
I'm sorry, it's Jason Clark, precinct three. Um, I'll say upfront, I'm environmentalist and therefore I strongly support purchasing all this land. Uh, my wife, Dar, and I, my wife and my daughter and I love walking through the town forest. And honestly, it would make me pretty proud to think that we acquired any, that any, that I had any part at all in there being this, some even more land for my daughter, uh, to enjoy or to know that it was preserved for her. Um, I think that we spend far too much time worrying about the present and not think, humans just aren't good about thinking about the long term and generations and stuff. And I, I see this as a wonderful opportunity to, to, to give something back that way. I also just want to point out that, uh, a few years ago, we bought the land on Simon's Way without a plan, uh, because we were similarly pressed for time and, but the town meeting agreed to purchase it and that's, this is just similarly the same opportunity we have in front of us today. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Ms. Alicia Williams, please.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alicia Williams, precinct eight. Uh, a couple of times tonight, you know, conservation has been a reason to purchase this land. Um, and our own select board chair had made a comment, I believe, two meetings ago, that maybe, and I quote, "We could use the land for low-income housing." Also, Mr. Kerrigan had said that we need to purchase this land and evaluate it for other purposes. Folks, this is not conservation. This is purchasing land and figuring it out later. And that is not fiscally responsible and not town meeting's job. If we had a use for this land, that would be, you know, we're absolutely going to do this? Great. Um, also, we used to park on Strout Avenue and that no longer happens. And that is a free option to help with the parking situation and stop with the runoff of Grove Street. I'd like to know, have we fully evaluated the existing space to solve this parking issue? We've never, ever talked about parking issues at the town forest in depth until the sale for land came up and now suddenly parking is an issue. I also would like to hear from our, um, either town manager or police department um, about the number of accidents that are down at Strout and Grove Street. Um, I, I really would like specific reasons why we need this land. I have not heard a concrete reason for why we need this land. We also, the funding that we thought we were going to use. I also, um, you know, watched the FinCom meeting last night and I have to say, I am a little, um, frustrated with the way this is all happening because I, I was kind of more on board with some things that happened at FinCom last night that are no longer options. So, um, if those questions could be answered, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have a response?
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Hable has raised his hand.
Oh, Mr. Hable, okay, Mr. Hable.
Go ahead, Mr. Hable.
Mr. Hable? Looks like you're muted. There we go.
I'm sorry, am I here now?
Yep.
It, it would be difficult to develop that Strout Ave area at all because as Ms. Scanlon said, it's in the, um, endangered species bubble on both sides. It's, it's out of town control. It's, it's due to the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act. It's very strict. As I said before, when we work in the town forest, state officials come out and look at the whole area. They're concerned about salam, blue-spotted salamander and boeening's turtle. And basically, the townspeople are tied without approval from, um, mass wildlife.
Okay.
Okay, um, further discussion?
Okay, Mr. Moderator, uh, Lorraine Conway.
Ms. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lorraine Conway, precinct five. Um, I have a couple of, of things that make me hesitant to want to vote for this. The first is that although all the uses that have been shown, currently there is no way legally to go from any of these lots into the town forest without an easement. So we're voting to spend money on something that we don't even know if it can be connected to the town forest. If that doesn't happen, that means that, okay, maybe we'll, we'll have a parking lot, but people will be walking down Grove Street to Strout Ave to get into the forest. Um, I just think it's a lot of money for a small amount of land without the appropriate information being gathered before this came to us. Um, there's been so much talk about priorities and community input and all of that. And these, not having an appraisal, to me, is inexcusable. And the fact that they're trying to use it when it legally can't be used for what they're asking for. Let's be honest, if you just want the land, you want the land, but you can't say that it can be used for anything, either going into the town forest or anything else, because legally that can't be done. So I would ask that if that could be answered, we don't have, if there's no easement, then we just own this land that's near the town forest, but can't be, you can't access the town forest through it. And I just find that that's an important thing that should have been looked into. And I also think that an appraisal should have been done before two point two-five million was asked for a little over two acres of land. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, uh, the town manager has, uh, his hand up.
Mr. Lulisha.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just want to circle back to a comment that I think was four speakers ago in terms of what FinCom discussed last night. Um, the, the purchase of one lot is warming up in the bullpen as town, this town, um, council mentioned. Um, just because it is not on the floor, it is by no means, um, not a, a possibility for this town meeting. So I just wanted to make sure the body understood that.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, Ms. Herrick.
Ms. Herrick.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, okay, I am voting in, I'm speaking as a town meeting member. My name is Karen Bailey-Herrick. I live in precinct eight. I've been a town meeting member for twenty years. Um, other than the Zani property, a couple of years ago, I can't ever remember too many examples of opportunities like this. The reason I'm supporting this measure, um, is because we just recently, we recently celebrated our ninetieth anniversary of the town forest. And in speaking to a number of volunteers in town and open space, um, conservation advocates, they have spoken about how the Reading Town Forest is a destination on the North Shore. And I would just like to take a moment to thank all of the boards and committees, volunteers like all of us who have put together the time and energy, including the Trails Committee, the Forest Committee, and the Conservation Commission to affirmatively advocate for this, this acquisition, this once-in-a-hundred-year opportunity to add to our town forest and to solve a very real safety problem. You know, I don't know how many of the people that aren't in support of this article actually use the town forest. Um, you know, it might be helpful in this virtual environment for people to say, you know, how often do I go to the town forest? If you don't see it as an asset because you don't use it, you know, that's something to consider. Another way to look at acquiring this asset is not only from a conservation and a resiliency opportunity, a climate resiliency opportunity, and a recreational opportunity. Um, but is also, um, uh, an attraction, an attractive destination for dog walkers. Among the committees that I mentioned, we don't have an official Reading Dog Walkers Committee. If we did, I can tell you, I know that they would be some of the biggest supporters because they are already actively using trails on this property. Meadowbrook has been a wonderful neighbor to us. They are, um, classified as open space and recreation land. Um, there are mutual, mutual benefits between the town of Reading and Meadowbrook. And I know that in addition to all of the long walks and, um, runs that I've been taking in town forest, I've also, with many other parents in town, been able to sled on the Meadowbrook property. So, so I have no doubt that this relationship will continue to be, um, mutually beneficial and cordial. And I would also like to say that although the Reading Open Land Trust is not an official town committee, they have also proudly supported this acquisition and they are the caretakers of somewhere from fifty to a hundred acres of open land in Reading, protecting it from development. Um, and then finally, probably a number of you saw the email and the letter to the editor that came in from the policy director of the Ipswich River Watershed Association, um, Patrick Lynch, who is also, um, a Reading Memorial High School grad. And I can't tell you how proud I am to have someone who is most recently a Reading resident and recently moved out of town, come back and care enough to advocate for the town to add to this, this resource, like a library, like the town common, like any of our ball fields. The town forest is a resource and something the community should invest in for any number of reasons already elaborated and something that will serve us, um, for generations. And there are other options with this particular piece of land. If we decide that, so to acquire it and control it, then we can decide what is the best use of it for our community. And again, we make the best decisions when we come together as a community and decide how we can best serve our residents and constituents, but we can't do that without control. So I am, for any number of reasons, supporting, proudly supporting the acquisition. And again, thank you to the Conservation Commission and, and all of the volunteers who have stepped up to say how important this resource and this exercising this right of first refusal will be to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just to let you know, we have thirty-one people in line. Uh, who is next?
Uh, John Arena.
Mr. Arena.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Arena, precinct one. I'd like to formally amend the motion on the floor to reduce its scope to Lot One only and make what other, other adjustments to the text that are appropriate with a Lot One only objective.
All right, Ken, I'll ask the town clerk, can that be done? Do you have, uh?
I think it could be accomplished by simply striking the words two, three, four, and five, and then adjusting the two references to dollars to whatever the charges would be for a single lot.
Okay, did, uh, did Mr. Lulisha, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm sharing a screen that would show that motion.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I see. Okay, good. Um, Mr. Arena, is this the motion you would like to make?
Uh, almost. Um, my intention is to amend the motion on the-
I believe it's really Lot Five, isn't it? Is that correct or am I wrong? Yes, oh, right there, it says Lot Five. Okay, go ahead.
Um, um, it may be. My intention is to amend the motion on the floor, not to all, offer an alternative motion. They may be one and the same.
Okay, before I accept that, I noticed I have a point of order from Mr. Herrick.
Okay, Mr. Herrick.
And I'll come back to you, John.
All right, Mr. Herrick, hold on a second. We have thirty-two people with their hands raised, so it's hard to find you. I know you have your hand up. I got you. Go ahead, Mr. Herrick.
Okay, I'm muted.
You're good, go ahead.
Leave before us, this is a, can you hear me?
Just, just barely. We cannot hear you. I'm sorry, we can't hear you, Mr. Herrick.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, okay. I don't, I was wrong. I was unmuted. Okay, sorry about that. Uh, Steve Herrick, precinct eight.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're clear on this. Uh, we have before us the article and a possible amendment, uh, amendment to that article. But we do not, we also have the option, I thought that we will do a five, on the five, with a backup article to vote for one. It's a little confused the way this is set up, but, um, uh, it seems like we're, are we jumping ahead? It seems like we're following my logic here. I thought we-
Let me explain how this would work. Uh, if this motion to amend was not made, If this motion to amend was not made and the original motion carried, that would be the end of the subject. If it failed, I understand it was a motion, a second motion to be made, the one that's before you now. But a motion to amend it at this point is appropriate. And then we would debate that and we'd vote on it. And then we would continue on with the main motion, either as originally written or as amended. So this would probably accomplish what the second motion would do.
Alan, my only concern is the title of this says motion option B. And to avoid any confusion that somehow we've done a switch, my intention would be to make this clear, this is the main motion.
Right.
With amendments.
Right. So your amendment is effectively a substitute motion?
Well, it is the way Bob's presented it. As I said, it may be the same thing.
Okay, is that what you wanted to do? You're the one making the motion.
It is only to limit it to the purchase of that single lot and adjustment of the fees. And I take it that those are what's referenced here. That's fine.
Okay. And we have another point of order, Ms. Binda.
Ms. Binda, go ahead and raise your hand. All right, we've got three. All right, go ahead, Ms. Binda.
Thank you. Angela Binda, Precinct 5. Mr. Moderator, as we have a second motion, I don't see how that would be within the four corners of it. It seems to be too big an alteration to make that kind of change for the main motion.
Well, since it is reducing it as opposed to expanding it, it is within the confines of the article. We had a second one. I lost track of who it was.
Oh, we have Mr. Barnes has a point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Barnes, go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Barnes.
Jonathan Barnes, Precinct 5. Just so that I understand, if Mr. Arena's motion is voted in the affirmative, does that mean that town meeting will not get to continue to debate and/or vote on acquiring all five lots?
If Mr. Barnes, excuse me, Mr. Arena's motion carries, we would then have a main motion for purchasing one lot. We would continue debating that, but the five lots would be, if this motion passed, that five lots would be defeated.
So it would no longer be?
No longer be option, right. Would no longer be an option.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, just to be clear, this option is effectively a substitute motion. It's really, it's a large amendment, changing the purchase from five lots to one lot. If that amendment carries, then we continue on with a new main motion that it's asking for purchase of one lot, not the five. And we would continue debating that and eventually take a vote on that. Okay, we have a second to that motion. Was there any other points of order or are we all set?
There's a request, there's a couple of points of order trying to determine if it's Lot 1 or Lot 5, just to be clear from the language that Mr. Arena said. And Ms. Freed says we need to be clear if it's Lot 1 or Lot 5.
Good point. Do we, Mr. Lulisher, could you help us out there? Do you know which, is it Lot 5 or Lot 1?
It should be Lot 5.
Should be Lot 5, okay.
That's the one left most, if you will. And if you don't mind, I just want to make sure everyone understands this amended motion is all dead. So if for some reason it passes quickly, I know the Finance Committee had an opinion on this.
Okay, and we would ask for an opinion from the Finance Committee before we continue. Okay, we have so many points of order coming in. But do you know who the next one was?
Let's see. So I think there's a number of points of order that are asking one question, the same question, which is, would this motion mean that we cannot return to vote on the purchase of the other four lots? So I think it would behoove you, Mr. Moderator, to explain what happens.
Okay, I did answer that, but I will answer it again. If this motion to amend the article, amend the motion from five lots down to one, and it carries, we would then be talking about buying the one lot, not five. The five lots plan would be dead, correct?
If, so and if the motion fails?
If the motion fails, I'm sorry, if the motion fails, we would go back to the main motion that we have been discussing, which is all five lots.
Okay.
So if you're looking to buy all five, you would want to vote against this. If you wanted just buy one, you'd vote for it. And then eventually you will have a chance to vote on whatever the motion turns out to be. Yes or no? Okay. Is that it?
We have a point of order from Mr. O'Neill.
Okay.
Mr. O'Neill, can you raise your hand, please? Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Oh, no, excuse me. All right, John O'Neill.
Mr. O'Neill.
John O'Neill, Precinct 4. My question is, if we vote down the amendment and go back to the the article as originally presented, and if that failed, do we lose the opportunity then to have the alternative to purchase the one lot?
Yes, then it would be tantamount to reconsideration.
So this is really an end run to the whole process?
Well, it's up to town meeting to vote on this, yes. Okay, any other points?
Ms. Landry, point of information, if the amendment fails and the motion fails, then we can go to Lot 5. I would just remind town meeting members not to put anything other than points of order in the chat. Comments are mucking it up and making it very difficult for us to follow it. And questions aren't necessarily points of order.
Thank you.
Mr., I don't see anything.
I just saw Ms. Klisch.
Ms. Klisch, yep. Ms. Klisch, please raise your hand. Thank you, got you. Go ahead.
Hi, thanks. This is Heather Klisch from Precinct 7. And my point of order, just to make sure I understand, this amendment changes the main motion so substantially, it would effectively skip the main motion. And I'm wondering if that is in fact in order?
Yes, it is in order because this is still within the confines of the original article. It's something less than what the article calls for. It is substantially different, but it's still within the confines of the article.
Mr. Moderator, there's a point of order from Ms. Herrick. Ms. Herrick, go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, got you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So when we started this discussion tonight, we had two motions, one to discuss, sorry, Precinct 8, town meeting member Karen Herrick. We had a motion, the main motion is currently discussed, right of first refusal, acquiring five lots. We were going to, at the end of debate, we were going to take a vote on that. Before us, we had a second option to only consider a single lot.
Right, but we now have a potential amendment that changes that.
Amendment to the thing we're discussing now. So what is extremely confusing to many town meeting members is we are not losing the motions we originally started with. This is an amendment specifically to the motion to acquire five lots, so.
Okay, I'll explain this again. If this amendment carries, we will now be discussing the purchase of one lot. That would be the only option left before you. Then you would vote that up or down. If this amendment fails, we go back to discussing the five lots, which you will eventually have a chance to vote on. This effectively eliminates the possibility of a second motion.
No, so that's the point of order. That's the point of order. We started this discussion with two options to vote on.
No, we have one motion before us to buy five lots.
Let me just be clear, before this amendment was made, this town meeting was expecting we would have a motion to discuss acquiring five lots. If we decided not to do that, we voted it down, and move on to discussing a second option that we have to acquire one lot. So this amendment to this current first motion does not change the fact that we had originally tended to discuss a second motion to acquire one lot. That's the point of information.
Right, but it does effectively eliminate the possibility of that second motion because this is the chance to do that. The game has changed since someone has made the motion to amend it. You would not be able to make a second motion because it would effectively be a reconsideration of the subject that would be before you if we take up this amendment.
See where you may be absolutely accurate. Could we just have town council validate that? That would be very helpful, I think.
Well, this is a moderator call, but Ms. Freed, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town council. It is a moderator call, and if the moderator believes that this would be tantamount to reconsideration, it's within his discretion to make that determination.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready to begin discussing the proposed amendment?
Yes, just as a reminder, Mr. Moderator, we have 33 hands raised with people lined up and ready to debate these questions before us. Okay, Mr. Bonazzoli.
Mr. Bonazzoli.
Good evening. Sorry, this is James Bonazzoli, Precinct 6. Although I live on Grove Street, I have no... I gotta hang up.
Nope, we hear you.
Okay. I have no buy in this. I have a couple of questions. Some have kind of been answered, but if you don't mind me just asking them again. I assume there's been no feasibility study done on this property. That's question one. I'm assuming no. Roughly cost, what would the feasibility cost us to say, okay, how can we use this land? And then, three, a question that's come up, I'm confused.
Mr. Bonazzoli, are you speaking to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
And so, yes, because the reason I questioned, my last question is actually to the amendment for Lot 5. Can we see that map again, Bob? Because I thought Mr. Hubbell, if I have his name correctly, said that the Massachusetts Protection Bubble goes to this property. I may have it confused with the Stroud Ave property, but... Because then I'm not in favor of the amendment if we can't do anything anyway.
I'm not sure if this is the slide or you want something, Conscom share had a far better descriptive slide if that's more helpful.
Yes, she had one that showed the bubble, what they were talking about, protection.
To that one?
Yes, I think it's this and the green one, Bob, implying that the migration of the protected animals and such. Oh, so it stops right there. Thank you. Did Mr. Hubbell clarify what he was talking about, the protection bubble?
Hello?
Go ahead, Mr. Habel.
I was talking about Stroud Ave.
Thank you for the clarity. I'm all set.
Okay, Ms. Scanlon, you have a comment?
No, Ms. Freed.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Freed, you did say that. Ms. Freed?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to ask a question about your ruling on whether it be tantamount to reconsideration. Considering that a motion to amend is a majority vote versus the acquisition of land, which would be two-thirds, does that alter your interpretation?
That's... Let me think about that. That could, because it is, you're right, it's only a majority for an amendment. I don't know, I don't think it makes a difference. If we're voting on this, going back and trying it a different way... Let's continue the subject. Let me think about this for just a minute. You have a point there. I think I'm going to stay with the same ruling, but let's continue on with this for a little while. Thank you.
Mr. Sasso.
Mr. Sasso?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Sasso, Precinct 2. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I guess I'll first just start off quickly. We don't have any conflicts. I am a user of the town forest. Been involved with the scouts here in town. Actually, earlier this year, stood in the mud fixing some trails. So I absolutely believe our resources and the community are very valuable. Let me just ask a few questions. First of all, this applies to, I believe, all five of the lots, but I know we're only talking about Lot 5 at the moment. So if, so these lots are actually an S-20, is that correct? There's no overlays? So these would be S-20 lots? They would revert to S-20 lots under those conditions, is that true? That'd be my first question. The second question is, I did drive by these lots and I actually saw it on the plan. There's a pretty good-sized retaining wall that's going across the front of most of these lots, although I'm not sure how far down it goes into Lot 5. And I know to Mr. Bonazzoli's point, I'm not sure if we've done a really good assessment of what the actual costs of making any changes to these lots would be, even with a parking lot. You know, we just had this conversation on Monday night about we made changes to the town departments and here we are voting on adjustments to space that we didn't think about. So this isn't just the purchase of $450,000 for land. It's also potentially additional monies that we might be committing ourselves to if we're going to have to make changes. The other thing is, so again, back to the S-20 question, are these actually buildable lots? If in fact we want to buy these, or just again, let's just stick with Lot 5 for the moment, what would happen if a developer came in and purchased that lot? Would they have to go to Conscom for order of conditions? What's the, you know, what is the process there? So there was a point said that, well, we'll lose control. I'm not sure entirely that's the case. So if somebody could convey to me, you know, is this actually a buildable lot regardless if someone bought it? And if so, what would that process be given its location? And I guess my last question would be, has anybody actually talked to the neighbors and asked them what they think would be the appropriate thing down in that area? You know, what is the community that they want to see down there? I think I certainly wasn't, I realize we're only talking about Lot 5, wasn't in favor of the overall. I still want to hear some information about these questions regarding Lot 5. And I will hope someone can answer those. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Do we have anyone who would like to respond to that?
I think Ms. Scanlon would like to respond.
Scanlon, okay.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate that. So to one earlier question, Mr. Bonazzoli's question about feasibility study done on one or all of those lots, the answer is that has not been done. This presentation that I gave tonight is a presentation of options. So we're not going to invest enormous resources, in other words, my pay, which is my volunteer time, into doing all the work if it's not really something town meeting is interested in. But just to let you know about that. The other question that just came up, and Mr. Moderator, if you don't mind repeating the last gentleman's main point, just so that I can speak to that.
I don't know what his last point was, I'm sorry.
I apologize, I didn't write it down. I know I had something to say about it. So is it possible for him to repeat?
Is that Mr. Sasso? Mr. Sasso, can you repeat your last comment?
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Sasso.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Sasso, Precinct 2. So a couple of points I had was, is this an S-20 district? If this lot is not, if we don't purchase the lot and a developer comes in and buys it, first point is, is this still an S-20? And then the second point is, if it is an S-20, is it buildable? And if it is buildable, does it require other, any conditions? Does it have to go to Conscom to get reviewed for any potential, you know, depending how far it is from certain conservation rules? So is there, would there? So is there, would there be some control over what would have to be done to the lot? So I think those are the points that you probably can answer.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Because we're talking about so many things tonight, I appreciate that. I can't speak to the zoning. I, my area of expertise is not in, you know, the buildability of the lots. Maybe other knowledgeable people can answer, speak to that. But what I will speak to is the conservation issue. Lot Five is within 100 feet of the wetland buffer line that is mapped on that engineering plan. And so Lot Five is definitely subject to conservation review before development. The 100-foot buffer does not extend into Lots Four, Three, Two, and One. However, natural heritage-protected space, that priority habitat area, that is that yellow-hatched giant area on one of those plans, work within the natural heritage area needs to be passed through their regulations, the NESA review and approval. So that isn't 100, that isn't exactly what conservation does. We rely on NESA's review, technical review, and input on projects to guide some of the protections and performance standards that we set up. I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion. Mr. Feudo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Christopher Feudo, Precinct Four. I'm strongly against this amendment. The town of Reading is given the option to purchase five lots. The Select Board, our elected officials, referred this question to us. It would be a great disservice to the citizens of Reading and the people we are serving as the representatives of it to take the option of five, of consideration of five lots off the table. So I will not support this amendment.
Okay, thank you. Before we continue, I have given this some thought. I have also talked with the town council, and I now do believe that the fact that a second motion would require two-thirds makes that different from this amendment. So we will continue discussing this amendment, and then whether it wins or loses, we'll eventually vote on the main motion. And if it's appropriate, I will allow a second motion with... It's a little confusing, but we're effectively going to be voting on the one lot option twice. We'll do that as the amendment here. If it fails, we go back to the five. If that fails, I'm expecting a motion for the one lot. It's not, it's very rare that we do this kind of thing, but after considering that it does, it's a different quantum of vote. I do think it's different. So now we'll continue on discussing the proposed amendment to one lot. Further discussion?
Mr. Doxer.
Mr. Doxer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mark Doxer, Precinct One, and a member of the Select Board. I had been in queue for the main motion, but I will speak now against the amendment. I see this amendment as potentially putting the town at a very significant disadvantage. However, I think that the ruling that you just made, Mr. Moderator, may kind of lighten that burden. The, the structure that had been in place allowed the town to vote on five, and if that failed, to go to one. This amendment would potentially stop that from happening and potentially get us nothing. So I am glad for your ruling, and I'm sorry that I'm a little bit tongue-tied because things, things change so quickly. But thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I do. Further discussion?
David Pennett.
Mr. Pennett.
Good evening, David Pennett, Precinct One. I am in favor of this motion, and I would like to move the question.
I am assuming you're moving the question on the, the proposed amendment.
Yes, I am.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a second. This is non-debatable. So we, if I could ask for a poll, this only requires a majority vote. But we are now voting on the proposed amendment, changing the number of lots from five to one.
Mr. Moderator, yep, there's a point of order. That Mr. Pennett, yep, Mr. Pennett expressed an opinion on the amendment and then asked for the motion.
You know, you're absolutely right. I think so many things were happening here. I actually dropped that.
Okay, we got like six people keeping us honest here.
Yes, right. So I am actually not going to allow that motion. I am sorry I did that, but there was just so many things going on. I just missed that point. But thank you for the point of order. Okay, we'll continue to discuss this proposed amendment.
Okay, Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Ventura.
I propose to end the debate on this motion.
Okay, so you are, you're moving to end debate on the...
On the amendment.
On the amendment, yes.
On debating the amendment.
Okay. Yes, okay. Is there a second? There is a second. Okay, again, I would ask for that poll, and sorry for the confusion. So we are now voting on ending debate on the proposed amendment, going from five lots to one.
Anika has a question about voting, or Anika.
Mr. Moderator, I'm ending the poll.
Okay. Before we do that, we had a question from, from Ms. Scanlon. What was the question?
Ms. Scanlon needs to raise her hand. I can't find her. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I just want, this is really my first participation in town meeting. I just wanted to give you guys, let you know that when these votes come up, there, I can interact with them. I seem to have that capability. I have not. I have not. I have not. But first, I don't know if that's typical. I just wanted to let you know that that option is open to me. And I don't think it should be.
Anika is in as an attendee.
Oh, all right.
So she got the poll. We can easily promote her to panel. It's not a problem.
Okay, good enough. Thank you. Okay. Laura, have you closed the poll?
125 to 47.
Okay, 125 to 47. The question has been moved, and we will now vote on the proposed amendment from five lots down to one. That requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the proposed amendment, please vote.
Mr. Moderator, I'm ending the poll.
Okay.
And it's 64 yes and 106 no.
Okay, so 64 yes and 106 no. So the proposed amendment fails. We are now speaking to the main motion, back to the five lots again.
Mr. Moderator, there is a point of order from Mr. Weld.
Mr. Weld, your point of order?
Go ahead, Mr. Weld.
It's a little late. I just wanted to make sure that the money value was updated on the amendment. So if we were voting yes to accept it, we weren't paying two and a quarter million for one lot. But since it failed, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Okay, just, okay. Further discussion on the main motion as originally presented.
All right. Nancy Doctor, go ahead.
Ms. Doctor.
Nancy Doctor, Precinct One. I'm also a town forest member, and I'm in support of the purchase of all five lots. I know it was referenced earlier, that I think it was April of 2019 that we bought 30 acres of land. Some of that, I think it's probably about a third of that land is totally unbuildable. It was wetlands. So regardless of these five lots about the suitability, land is land. I'd be curious to know from the town manager how long we kept the land that Wood and School was built on before we actually decided what to do with it. So anytime we have an opportunity to purchase land, we should use it. For people who have raised concerns about access to the town forest and whether or not we should go back to using, you know, Stroud Avenue, it's just a silly argument. It's off the table. And to be honest with you, I don't even know why anybody would want a parking lot there. Any parent of a teenager, why would you want a parking lot away from the neighbors or from the police patrol? I would want any parking lot to be visible from the road. Ask the police chief. The cops don't like walking into orchard woods now with flashlights. The town forest is 300 acres. Our parking lot should be accessible from the main road and well-lit. In terms of just conservation, I'm not going to repeat what other speakers said, but I think this is a win-win, not only for conservation, but if we decide to use this land for something down the road. So I'm going to vote in favor of all five. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Helena Johnson.
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Helena Johnson, Precinct Five. I am in full support of this article. I look at this as an opportunity for the town. This land has, is valuable. This land is worth quite a bit, not just for people, hikers, dog walkers, but to plants and animals, endangered species. While this land is, is worth quite a bit now on the market at 450,000 per lot, that is the going rate. The developer would not buy it at that price if he could not make a profit. But it has a greater value than money. This land is an ecosystem of plants and animals with vernal pools within feet of the lots for sale. It is connected to the town forest via green space, meaning undeveloped land. I believe it's owned by the water department perhaps and part of the golf course. And I mean, there's no buildings obstructing animals and endangered species from moving through here. So it could function as a continuation of our beloved town forest for animals. The place we take walks with our family and friends, where we walk our dogs, this is where we decompress, where we flock to when the pandemic hit. We should value that. When my family goes on dog walks, we drive by Meadowbrook Country Club, we round the bend, and suddenly we find ourselves on a stretch of beautiful wooded road without houses. It feels for a second, you're on a country road all of a sudden. It is, it is beautiful in every season, especially now in the fall. It prepares one for the time they are about to spend in nature. If we allow this land to be developed, the first thing we will see is a row of large houses, almost until you reach the town forest entrance. This would add five driveways, further limiting parking space on the street. People visiting these new houses may park in the street and just forget if they have a birthday party or graduation party, especially when everyone is heading to the town compost. The parking on the street would be even be more congested then. I am also sure the neighbors across the street would much rather keep their beautiful view that when they purchase their house, that's what they were buying. People complain that Reading is becoming a city, too developed with tall condos built right up to the sidewalk. Well, I asked these same people how they feel about big houses built on this wooded area near our town forest. Also, people complain of coyotes and foxes and fisher cats running through our streets and yards. I know this won't solve this issue, but it definitely won't help it. I am strongly for this, the town buying this beautiful land. I do, I do think we can afford this land. While real estate is high, this is one of, of the few articles that does not require any inflated building cost at this moment in time. Land value will not decline. We are in this for the long haul. If we want to keep the beauty of Reading and its uniqueness of having our very own town forest, I implore you, please vote to allow this town to purchase this gorgeous land, all five lots. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Chief Clark has his hand raised to respond to comments from Ms. Doctor.
Okay, Mr. Chief Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would just like to clarify something Ms. Doctor said about the police don't like to go in and check the woods. I believe what she said with the flashlights. We do check the trails, the conservation areas quite regularly, and part of it, when we get the mountain bikes back up and running, we do the same thing. So I just wanted to clarify the kind of the impression I got, unless I took it wrong, is that the police aren't checking these areas, and we do on a regular basis. I just wanted to let the public know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Thomas Grant.
Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Ms. Welman. I commend both of you on the job that you're doing tonight. Tom Grant, Precinct Four. I just want to say that when I first saw this article came up, I saw the $2.25 million, and I also had the reaction of some here that that's a lot of money for not a lot of acres. But then when I started to learn more about it, and I realized that the price was determined by a developer, who, as someone else already noted, is in here to make money, that told me that this is the market value of the land. On top of that, I also discovered the developer is a Reading resident, and I'd like to commend Mr. Manganiaro for identifying himself on this call. So a Reading resident agreed that this is the proper price for this land. That, for me, answered the question, is this the right price or not? So I think this is definitely the right price for this land. Then the other thing I was thinking about, when thinking about this motion, was what could we use the land for? And that's also something I think some other folks have mentioned on this call. And it's just, it's very clear to me that just conservation alone is a very good concrete use of this land. So even if that's our only plan, it's a very good plan. But, as others have also already stated, so I'll be quick, us buying it gives us the option to have more than just that good use. There's many good concrete uses for this land beyond conservation. We could sell it again in the future. We could use it for trails and parking. There's, having this option is what's important. So I'm very much in support of buying all of this land because that not only gives us the chance to get it at a fair market price, but then also controls the future of the land here in Reading.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Manganello.
Mr. Manganello.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Guy Manganello, Precinct Two, and the potential purchaser, should the town not enact their Chapter 61 right? I'd like to call the question.
Okay, we have a motion to end debate. Is there a second? Second. All right, this is a non-debatable motion, requires a two-thirds vote. If I can have the poll put up, vote yes if you want to end debate, and vote no if you want to continue.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to point out that there's 25 folks in the queue to speak.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Moderator, I am ending poll.
Okay.
And it is ninety-one yes and seventy-seven no.
Okay, the vote being ninety-one in the affirmative and seventy-seven in the negative, it does not meet the two-thirds threshold. We will continue debate. Okay, uh, next up. Mr. Giacchione.
Michael Giacchione, Precinct Five, um, couple of things that, uh, uh, I want to bring up. The, the land is being purchased, um, uh, understanding without an appraised value on it. Um, there are a couple of comments that were made about the appraised value. Uh, it is not something that's obvious. I think it was Joseph, uh, Cunningham who said, isn't it obvious how much this land is worth? Uh, no, it's not obvious to me. I'm not a real estate person. I have no way of being able to determine how much this land is worth. Uh, we're talking over two million dollars for two acres of land, two plus acres of land. That's an awful rich piece of land there. Um, as far as getting it and holding on to it for potential use, a- as a business person, if I'm going to be spending money on something, I need to know what that's going to be having available for options. You just don't go buy a business because you say, oh, I'll figure it out later. Uh, we just don't go buy land and say, let's figure out what we're going to do with this later. Uh, there was a comment made about the land that was purchased that a school was built on. Uh, that land is in a different location altogether. It's not near the town forest. It's not near these vernal pools. It's not near endangered species. So I'm sure that when they purchased that land, they had a good idea that they'd be able to do something with that land. They probably hopefully had some ideas. I was not around at that time, so I don't know. But I have to say, if you're going to spend two plus million dollars on something, one, I need to know that's what that land is actually worth. Just because two parties agree on a price, that's what it's worth between those two parties. That doesn't mean that's what it's worth in the open market. Um, let me see, what else did I put down here in my comments? Um, uh, we have, uh, there was a comment made about, well, we have over seventeen million dollars in cash. Well, just because we have that, it doesn't mean we spend it. Uh, i- if, uh, I certainly don't run my household that way. Businesses that I consult with don't run their businesses that way. You have that money, there's intended uses, savings, rainy day funds, things like that. You just don't go spend it because you have it. This is, uh, I'm getting a sense that people are saying, oh, just spend this money because they don't really see how it's coming out of their pocket. Uh, when we look at these things that we have on the plans tonight, if all four of these motions were accepted, there'd be almost fifteen million dollars that would be spent. That, I think that's an outrageous amount of money. So, um, to, to spend this money on this land and then figure out what we're going to do with it when we don't know what the potential uses would be, given its location, I think that would be irresponsible and irresponsible spend of the money. Um, it's not in some sort of area that you say, well, there's plenty of options for it. There may be no options for this and its value isn't obvious. Uh, so I think we need to do a lot more work on this, this land before we can decide if we're going to spend this much money on it. It's, it's far too much money for me.
Further discussion. I think you might be muted.
You're right. Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Ross.
Thanks, Jane. Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Um, uh, Ed Ross, um, Precinct Five, uh, FinCom Chair. I, I'd like to make an amendment to, um, to this, and I'm, and I think it's a friendly one, at least I'm trying to be friendly. Um, in that I, um, wanted to be able to adjust the funding in, in this, um, amendment to reflect, um, what FinCom, um, voted, uh, last evening, um, which, um, was to, um, have this funded by, um, one point five million, uh, with debt and the remainder with free cash.
Can we have the, uh, original motion put on the screen?
You don't want me to do that right now?
No, he wants me to do it.
Yeah, let me rephrase that. Bob, would you put the, uh? Okay, so where, where is your proposed amendment?
I think it would be right here.
Okay, can we have those put in red or something just to make it?
Yep, will do.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Does that option B, is, is that still, um, warranted to have that there, the option BP? I, I, I don't care. I just, as long as the number's right.
I believe the option B is no longer appropriate.
Well, uh, option B in this case is a, is a different way to finance it.
And it's not part of the actual motion.
Well, let me, yeah, I'll get rid of that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is that the, um, those correct changes?
Thank you. That's, that's perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, do we have a second? Yes, we do. Okay, we are now discussing that proposed amendment.
Okay, one moment. Mr. David Talbot has his hand raised.
Okay. Mr. Talbot, the, to the amendment?
Well, I mean, I've been ready to comment on the value of preserving this land and, uh, comparing it to the one point five million we agreed to renovate a couple of rooms and how the, the value of preserving this land is, is at least as valuable as that. And so I'm not really, yeah.
Okay, we're actually talking about, well, we'll come back to you, but right now we're.
You switched it up on me. I understand.
Yeah, I understand. You're next in line too. Yeah, we will come back to you though. Don't leave his hand up. Okay, anybody else? Okay, anyone else who would like to speak to the, uh, proposed amendment?
We're just gonna have to go pull them as we go down because they're in order of when they raise their hands. So the next person is Anne Marie Corey.
Okay, Ms. Corey, are you speaking to the amendment?
No, I am not speaking to.
Okay, we'll leave your hand up. Uh, anybody, uh?
Sasha, there's no way to tell. Sasha Corkin.
Ms. Corkin?
Sasha?
All right, um, I, I guess my hand has been up for a while now. I'll.
Okay, all right, we'll leave that. Wait, let's see if there's a better way to do this.
We can ask them to put it in the chat.
Put it, put it in the chat, right. That's a good idea. If anybody ha- wants to speak specifically to the amendment. I don't want to have people lose their place in line for the main motion.
Okay.
Okay, I see a point of order. Mr. Anderson?
Okay, Mr. Anderson. Go ahead and raise your hand, Mr. Anderson. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Carl Anderson, Precinct Seven. Uh, several people have spoken, all asking pretty much the same question. It's never been answered. And I think it would help to know the.
Okay, that is, that is not a point of order. That would, uh, you'd have to raise your hand to ask that question again. Uh, it looks like Ms. Ms. Forten wants to speak to the amendment.
Okay, yep, I see. All right, go ahead, Ms. Forten.
Can I do it?
Yeah, you're on.
All right, Vicki Forten, Precinct Two. I have to say that I have, I had a big problem with taking up that much debt for land that we didn't have a use for, but I do totally understand the conservation point. So I'm much happier with this amendment where it's not all going to debt. I'd actually be even happier if less of it was coming out of debt and more out of free cash. But that's, I'm not going to make an amendment to that. Thank you.
Any further, uh?
Yes, Mr. Doer.
Mr. Doer?
Hey, go ahead, Mr. Doer.
Yes, um, my, my question, um, Ed Ross has made, uh, some amendments here. Um, is this, hi, FinCom? I, I, because I was under the impression that FinCom did not support all five lots. Can, can you clarify that for me?
Mr. Ross, do you have a clarifying comment?
Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Moderator. Um, so, um, so yes, i- in, in our meeting last night, um, we had a series of votes. Um, and, um, it was basically to cover off these contingencies, um, that if, um, the, um, if town meeting would approve, um, the five lots, that there was a, um, a preferred funding method, um, by FinCom. And that's what's reflected in this amendment.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Doer.
So FinCom did not support the five lots.
That's what it sounded like he said.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, let's see, I have, okay, Mr. Arena.
Okay, one moment. Go ahead, Mr. Arena.
John Arena, Precinct One. Bob, the, the one and a half million of debt, that would be twenty-year debt? And, and what, if anything, would that do to the, the five percent of the five point five, excuse me, five point five percent capital spend? I've lost track of what I, what stress there is in the capital budget.
Uh, Mr. Wellisher?
Um, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, that would require, um, based on the capital plan that's in front of you for October, uh, town meeting, um, that would require, um, just a little over two hundred thousand per year, uh, to be reduced. If it was ten-year debt, which is what, um, was originally planned, it could be longer debt and therefore there, there could be less of a need to reduce capital. But as, as a ten-year, we'd have to move two hundred thousand out of next year's capital plan, four hundred thousand out of the following year and so on and so forth.
Okay, Mr. Arena? You're all done? Okay, any other questions on the amendment? It doesn't appear so.
I'm not see- seeing none in the chat.
Okay, so could we have a poll put up? If you are in favor of the amendment, please vote yes, and if not, please vote no.
Nope, Mr. Arena says he wasn't done.
Oh, oh, I actually asked him. I see. Okay, Mr. Arena, before we take the poll, can we take the poll down for a second? Mr. Arena, continue.
Sorry to put you guys through this. Uh, Bob, does that two hundred, two hundred K, four hundred K in the out years, does that put the capital budget under stress? I mean, obviously you're delaying projects. Um, is there a discussion about raising the cap from five or five point five and beyond?
Mr. Wellisher?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That's John. John, that's really a finance committee decision. We did discuss extensively last night the impact on the capital plan. If it was fully debt financed and now this would be partial, so there'd be slightly less of an impact. Uh, FinCom did not mention, uh, raising the five and a half percent cap or adding more free cash to balance the annual budget.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, okay, we had, nope, it's gone away. Okay, any further discussion on the proposed amendment? Looks like we do not. Okay, so now could we have the poll put up? This is vote on the proposed amendment changing the funding. Vote yes if you're in favor of the amendment and vote no if you're not. This requires a majority vote.
Mr. Moderator, I'm ending the poll.
Okay.
And it's one thirty-three yes and thirty-three no.
One thirty-three to thirty-three, the, uh, motion carries and the main motion has been amended. I see we have a point of order from Ms. Williams.
Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Uh, thank you. I actually had a, I was confused how this was, if we were going back to the main motion, but you just answered that. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Uh, we have just had a request, uh, for a roll call vote when we get to the main motion. At that point, I will ask if we have twenty town meeting members in favor. Okay, further discussion on the main motion is amended.
Uh, okay, we're back to Mr. Talbot.
Mr. Talbot, okay, have we gone through everybody as far as you know, first?
For first, there are some folks that are, that haven't spoken. Um, there are some folks that have spoken, um, but at different parts of the questions that we asked today. So folks have, and people have raised their hands and lowered them and then, or raised their hands for different things. So there are people that are in line that'll speak twice on the article in general, but.
I see. Okay, it is, does get confusing. Where, where, Mr. Talbot?
Mr. Talbot.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Dave Talbot, Precinct Five. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I just want to, just think about all the things that we sometimes spend millions of dollars on. And, you know, a couple of nights ago, we voted a pretty remarkable sum of, of one point five million to finish out, uh, some interior renovations on, on a fairly new building in town. Um, this is, this, this is something where we have a chance to save a really nice patch of, uh, mostly hardwood forest contiguous with the existing forest for just moderately more than that, something that we can potentially enjoy for the rest of time. You know, I don't, I don't think we need to be thinking about, about a use. Uh, the value is in the intangible of land preservation and that's not really something, I don't think FinCom has really set up to, to consider. It's a question for us, you know, what do we value as a town? And I think the use is to add it to the natural areas as others have, have said, many of which, if not most of which, have been lost in recent years. Um, let's save this for our kids and grandkids, for all the environmental and conservation purposes that have been articulated, including keeping that stretch of road with that, that beautiful, uh, country lane feel, as, as one speaker noted, which is really the only part of town, I think, that feels like that, um, at this point. Is it a lot of money? Yeah, but it's, it's in a way, it's, it's not. It's, it's, if, and if it costs me a few more dollars a year in taxes, uh, which I don't even know if it would cost that, I'm very, very, very happy to pay it. And I hope that you all, well, will, will, will join in voting yes for this and, and saving this piece of land. Thank you.
Further discussion.
Anne Marie Corey.
Ms. Corey.
Hello, Anne Marie Corey, Precinct Five. Um, I would just echo what Mr. Talbot said. Um, in, in terms of the question of usage, um, it seems to me that there's already a developer who has established that he would be more than happy to use the land. Um, so I think absent a feasibility study, we don't have that direct information, a concrete information, but we do have, um, a very interested developer, um, who has established that that would be of value. And I think that we've seen from developers that it's, um, when, when they put money on the line, they're willing to go to great lengths to be able to use that land. Um, and I would just echo what Mr. Talbot said about, um, kind of shifting our priorities to think about not so much what the land can do for us in a profit sense, but, um, how can we, um, improve our town? How can we protect our environment? All of the conservation points that have been made all evening. It, it is not a concrete answer in the sense of being able to see it on a bottom line. But, um, it is part of the, the character of this town and it's a value that this town has upheld since I've been here, which is nearly twenty-five years. And I will be voting for this to purchase all five parcels. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the main motion. Mr. Corkin?
Uh, Ms. Corkin, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sasha Corkin, uh, Precinct Eight. I move the question.
Move the question. Okay, uh, this requires a two-thirds vote, non-debatable. I would ask that the poll be put up. I would ask that the poll be put up and begin voting on whether or not to end debate.
Mr. Moderator, I'm ending the poll.
Okay.
And we have 132 to 40.
The vote being 132 to 40, the two-thirds threshold has been reached, and the question has been moved. Debate has stopped. Now, we had a request earlier for a roll call vote. This is, we don't vote to have a roll call vote, but we ask if there are at least 20 members who want a roll call vote. If we reach the 20 or more, we will have a roll call. So I would ask now, using the hand-raising option, if you want a roll call vote. Oh, hold on, just.
There's already 30 hands, 20 somewhat hands up, so I'm going to lower all the hands, because debate has ended, just as a procedural rule to so declare. I'm going to lower all hands, and then.
Hold off until the hands are lowered, and I will tell you when you can raise them. We all set now? Oh, great, sorry about that. Okay, now, raise your hands if you want a roll call vote. Okay, we have passed the 20 threshold. It is now, oh, wait a second, I'm sorry. Did you start lowering them?
I did not.
Okay, so it's, it's, I'm going to let that stabilize then a little bit before I call it. Okay, it looks like we do not have the 20. It popped up to 20, and then, and now we do. Hold on, I'm going to give it another second here. Okay, we now have 22, so we are going to have a roll call vote. All right, we're going to do it the way we did it the other night. Things should be a little bit easier. We have fixed the way the spreadsheet comes out, so I should be able to read them much quicker than we did the other night. So we will put the poll up, and.
One moment, Mr. Moderator, you have a couple of points of order in the chat before you run that poll. Mr. Beckwith would like to have the motion, the main motion explained. That is now before town meeting, that is amended.
Okay, could we have, Bob, could we put the main motion back up? The only amendment we've made was to the funding, correct? Yep, there we go. So we are voting on the five, the five lots, and the type of funding was changed.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, there's also some questions about the roll call vote in the chat.
Okay, and who do we have? I don't, they're actually in the chat, the questions?
Yes.
All right, let me take a look.
A lot of important information.
Okay, point of order, point of info. May I make a motion to not verbally run through all the votes? And we'll get back to that in just a second. Okay, I do not believe we, one question is, can we, do we have a list of the people who asked for the roll call vote? Mr. Enslinger requested it, but beyond that, we do not have a list. The question, can we make a motion to not verbally run through all the votes and make it available at a later point? I, 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 I'm going to ask the town council if it is legal to do that, because our charter asks that it, I've always assumed it had to be immediate. So let me pose that question to the town council, if she is available, if that would be a legal motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think the interpretation of reading a roll means that it has to be read out loud. I would suggest that we follow our standard practice in this.
That's, that's the way I had assumed it, but I thought I ought to check. Thank you very much. Okay, so I cannot allow that. So now we are, I believe, we have any other questions?
You're good.
Yeah, okay, good. So we will now, have we got the correct poll up there with the, the roll call? Where else?
The main motion, yep.
The main motion, there we are. Okay, there we go. So vote, and then what will happen is, I will get a spreadsheet, and I will read the names.
Mr. Moderator, I'm ending the poll.
Okay. So first, we'll get the results, and then I will read the roll. We have a question, is this two-thirds of the entire body or two-thirds of those in attendance? The answer is, it's two-thirds of those in attendance and voting.
The total number is 102 to 68, with two abstaining.
102 to 68. It does not reach the two-thirds threshold. But I will still read the roll if you have, when the file comes over. Yes, yeah, there was a question in there asking who had, who had called for the roll call. I did say that already, it was Mr. Enslinger. And once the roll has called, there may be a second motion. This is what we talked about in length earlier. I have decided to allow it because of the quantum of vote is different. It does not tend amount to reconsideration, so there may be a second motion. But we need to get this business finished first.
Mr. Moderator, you have a couple of points of order in the chat. We're waiting on the names. Mr. Moderator, it's coming your way.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, we have a question, why we cannot know who's requesting, do we have a roll call? I have actually said that twice, it was Mr. Enslinger. We cannot tell you all 20 names, because it just goes by too fast. We just don't have the technical capability right now. Okay, and I'm still waiting for this file. Here we go. Let me pull it up over here. And that looks easier to read, much easier. Okay, thank you very much. Here we go with the roll call. Okay. Make sure I'm at the top, yes. Okay, first is Eileen Manning, no. It's stuck, hold on. I'm so sorry, my machine has frozen. There we go. Okay, Jessica Tran, yes. Sean O'Connor, yes. Sasha Corkin, yes. Alan Moser, yes. Tony Capobiano, yes. Philip Pacino abstain, abstain. Diane Kennedy, yes. Tara Gardina, Giardina, no. Will Finch, yes. Sheila Mulroy, yes. Emily Jones, yes. John Sasso, no. Vanessa Silva, no. Thomas O'Connor, yes. Karen Herrick, yes. Sean Bryant, yes. Mary Ann Tompkins, no. William Brown, no. Thomas Grant, yes. Kendra Cooper, yes. Daniel Pastore, no. Erin Tierney, yes. Donna Bullier, no. Thomas O'Rourke, yes. Patrick O'Sullivan, no. Michael Shemansky, no. Sheila Reichart, no. Brian O'Meara, no. John Breslin, no. Driscilla Wood Beckwith, yes. Kelly Malone, yes. Vicky Fortin, yes. Gina McCormick, yes. Joe Pegliuka, no. Dan Daniel Duer, no. Kyle Weld, no. Christine Strack, yes. Simone Payment, yes. Diane Iazzo, yes. John Arena, no. Cynthia Cool, yes. Ed Ross, yes. Jeffrey Struble, yes. And another page. Eric Bergstrand, no. Lisa Bibbo, yes. Charles Donnelly Moran, yes. Kerry Perry, no. Steve Leahy, no. Jeffrey Beckwith, yes. Teresa Wiggins, yes. Sarah Doan, yes. Gregory Stepler, yes. Rachel Garcia, yes. Jonathan Barnes, yes. Ann Crookshank, yes. Giuseppe Fodera, no. Robert Mandell, no. James Bonazzoli, no. Kate Goldus, yes. Richard Coco, yes. Hillary Mateve, yes. David Murdock, no. Ian Brown, yes. Ann Landry, yes. David Panett, no. Greg Sevletta, no. Janice Jones, yes. Laura Fusco, yes. Angela Binder, yes. John Sullivan, yes. Melissa Murphy, no. Jason Clark, yes. Diane Halsey, no. Meredith Yoder, yes. Jackie McCarthy, yes. Eric Burkhardt, yes. John Corbett, yes. Stephen Cool, no. Jessica Franklin, no. Mark Doxey, yes. Christopher Feudo, yes. Amy Cole, yes. Thomas Wise, no. Joanne Manville, yes. Beth Sherwin, yes. Ronald DeRosa, yes. Joseph Conahan, yes. Helena Johnson, yes. Carolyn Nizarro, no. Deborah Hatterit, no. Daniel Enslinger, no. Yitano Mangiello, no. Charles Robinson, no. Mary Ann Downing, no. Lorraine Conway, no. Jeffrey Corum, yes. John Scott, no. Kentucci, no. John Halsey, no. Sean Neville, no. Kevin Leat, yes. Gordon McIntosh, yes. David Fierabend, yes. Peter Brown, yes. Jesse Arnold, yes. Christine Lusk, yes. Bernard Horn, no. Robert Ferrari, no. Paula Perry, yes. Barry Berman, no. John Lippett, yes. John O'Neill, yes.
Carl Anderson.
Carl Anderson, no. Thomas Perry, no. Eileen Leterio, no. Jennifer Hillary, yes. Carolyn Whiting, yes. Nathan Giacalone, yes. G. Thomas's, yes. Paul Sylvester, no. Karen Janowski, no. David Talbot, yes. Alan Bullier, no. Bruce McKenzie, yes. Francis Burke, no. Susan Craven, no. Joseph Sarafine, no. John Miles, yes. Heather Klisch, yes. Erin Gaffin, yes. Eric Gaffin, yes. Patricia Lloyd, yes. Marcel Dubois, no. Stephen Herrick, yes. Anne Marie Corey, yes. Michelle Greenwald, abstain. Sarah Brucalaccio, no. Laura Joelsson, yes. Jim Reichart, no. Linda Snow Doxey, yes. Carla Bachi, no. Jeffrey Jaduel, no. Brandon Chapman, no. Larry Hayes, yes. Lauren Columba, excuse me, Lorenzo Columba, no. Mary Ellen O'Neill, yes. Alicia Williams, no. Vanessa Alvarado, yes. Kerry Donnell, yes. Jean Brodowski, no. Michael Giacalone, no. Audra Hart, yes. David McIsaac, yes. Martha Moore, yes. Allison Sillers, no. Nancy Toomey, yes. Heidi Wise, no. Todd Merkel, no. Howard Cohen, yes. Lynn Cameron, yes. Megan Fidler Carey, yes. Emily Sisson, no. Norman Koslowski, yes. James Satawhite, yes. Laura Wilson, yes. Elizabeth Whitlam, yes. Brendan Carroll, no. Etain, Ode, Oday, yes. Fausto Garcia, yes. Michelle Sanfi, yes. Nancy Doctor, yes. And, is that the other list?
It is.
Yes, that's the other list, okay. All right. That is it. Does anybody think I made a mistake, or somebody who did not vote?
Mr. Moderator, I got a couple of things, Mr. Salvatelli.
Salvatelli, I don't need that.
His vote was read incorrect, he's a yes.
Oh, sorry about that, okay. And what else do we have?
Mr. Weaver, John Weaver. Did not hear his name.
Okay, do you have Mr. Weaver out there? Laura?
Um, two seconds.
Martha Moore is also.
Okay. Okay.
Both Mr. Weaver and Ms. Moore voted in favor, they believe.
Okay. I'm not finding Weaver on the list, but I will defer to Laura for that. I did find Martha Moore, who voted yes.
I am not finding Mr. Weaver.
Okay, Mr. Ventura?
Ventura, let me go check him.
Mr. Weaver was a yes.
Okay.
Okay, and Ventura, I am not finding. Do you see him out there?
No, he is not. He did not vote.
Okay. All right, I, we are now done with that. Do we have a second motion under this article?
We have a number of hands up, Mr. Moderator, so.
Okay.
Let's see. I have a point of order.
Okay, Mr. Arena?
Mr. Arena, please raise your hand. Go ahead, Mr. Arena.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You've, you've given the opinion that the question about to be raised and an earlier vote are not a matter of reconsideration. Strike me, there's a path to determine that with parliamentary procedure rather than an opinion. It's within the town meeting's control and within its right to call for reconsideration. It's a process to do that. It avoids any appearance or any judgment, other than that rendered by the, by town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We, do we have a motion? Do we have anyone who's planning on making that motion? The motion for one lot.
Oh, the, the, yeah.
Yeah, a second motion under the same article. Uh, Ms. Landry?
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm very happy to make the motion. At our last board meeting, we voted to bring both proposals to town meeting. Part of the reason that this was time-sensitive is that the offer for the one lot is due to expire Wednesday, the day after our next select board meeting. So is this, is the motion now on the, on the, on the screen here? I'm not sure.
Yes, it is.
Okay, fantastic. So this is the, the offer that has been alluded to, so that the, the board can decline to exercise our right of first refusal, given town meeting's prior vote, and, and vote to accept an offer that was put before us to acquire Lot 5 for a sum of $450,000.
Okay, is there a second? There's a second. Okay, do we have, do you have any more discussion, Ms. Landry?
I just unmuted her, I'm sorry.
Okay, will you? Okay, were you complete?
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna bring her back.
Oh, she said she's okay. Okay.
Okay.
I did notice a point of order from Ms. Williams.
From Ms. Williams, okay. We have a couple of points.
Okay, I only saw the one.
Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want some clarification, and I apologize if I'm not keeping up with what's happening, but we just voted down purchasing five lots, correct?
Correct.
And now we're looking to backpedal and buy one? How is that allowed? I'm confused.
You can have separate motions under the same article. We very rarely use that, but it is possible to do that, and the select board made it clear that that was an option that they were going to exercise. So what made it confusing was we had a previous amendment to do similar thing. That's what, but i- if you just forget that since it lost, we then went for the first main motion, which called for the five lot.
Nope. Wait.
You cut out.
Hold on, he cut out, right?
I cut out? Oh, I'm sorry. Let me, I'm sorry about that. Let me do that again. There is, there is an option to have more than one main motion within a, an article. It's very, something we rarely do because it does get very confusing. But in this case, the select board made it clear that's what they were intending to do. Now, what made this confusing was we had a, a proposed amendment that was doing something similar, but putting things out of order. That failed, so then we went back to the main motion with the five lots. And since that failed, the selectmen are now coming up with their second motion within that same article. I know it's confusing because we don't do it very often, but it is, it is acceptable.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, no problem. Okay, do we have, oh, do we have a finance committee report on that? I believe we heard it, but let's try it again. Mr. Ross? I just want to make sure everybody's clear what, what people were in favor of.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And Jane, just, I have my hand up for another reason, so if I can just keep it up, just.
Oh, sure. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so apologies. Let me just pull that up again. I wasn't.
Okay.
I wasn't exactly ready. So in our meeting last night, we voted, and let me just make sure I have the vote right here. We, so on, on this option to buy one lot for the sum of $450,000, we voted 8-0 to recommend this article to, to town meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have a few questions out there. Let me go back and see what they are. Okay, coming from the bottom, this is not an amendment. This is a second motion. And yes, it does require a two-thirds vote, just as if, just like with the five lot motion. This would require two-thirds vote. Okay.
Yep, go back up to Dave Talbot.
Okay, go back up to Dave Talbot. All right. Um. I am.
10:15.
Oh, I see. Thank you for the time. Let's see. Okay, Mr. Talbot, point of order. Why did the main motion need two-thirds when there's an opinion, when there's an option for using free cash? Very strong majority wants this. Can Town Council clarify? Could I call on the Town Council?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Motion that borrow or appropriate money for the acquisition of real property required two-thirds vote. So it wouldn't have mattered if all of the funds under the Lot 5 option were coming from free cash. The motion still would have required two-thirds. But in this case, that question is really moot because it did involve borrowing, borrowing always, regardless of whether or not it is real property requires two-thirds.
Thank you very much. All right, let's see the next one.
Mr. Sasso.
Mr. Sasso, okay. I don't see it out here, but I'll believe you. Mr. Sasso, your point of order?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Sasso, precinct 2. Just, just a quick question. We got a new set of motions tonight just prior to the meeting, and it only contained one motion for Article 9. So you're now, I'm just, I just want to understand. So you said that there are times when you might have more than one motion, but I, I'm just trying to understand how you're moving to that, how we are moving to that, given that the motions that were then presented to us just minutes before the town meeting started didn't include that second motion. So can you just explain that to me? Is that, is that actually an appropriate thing that we can do?
Yes, it is. Technically, the motion does not have to arrive until it arrives at the meeting. It's, it's good practice to do it before that, of course, but it's only the article. It has to be posted. And they made, they had made a comment that they were going to have two motions, but.
I understand. I'm just, I guess I would, I guess I would say this, this just, again, is another reason why, you know, trying to do this last minute just really confuses people. All right, thank you.
Yes, okay, okay. Anything else out there, or is that it?
The other, a couple of other points of order were related to the same thing that Mr. Sasso asked.
Oh, okay.
Um, let's see.
I think.
And then Mr. Ross was going to speak on the motion, and.
Okay.
I don't know if that will include information on financing.
Okay, Mr. Ross?
Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Am I muted yet? Sorry.
I hear you.
Okay, sorry. I didn't, I didn't know. I'm glad I didn't say anything. I probably would have been unmuted for a while there, so. I, I wanted to make an amendment to this one, and again, another friendly one, similar to the last one, just to reflect the FinCom vote from last evening, where we will, we voted 8-0 to, to have the funding for this be all from free cash, all 104, $450,000.
Okay, once we get that up, I will accept that motion. Okay, all set. Okay.
That looks good. Thanks.
Right, okay. But is there a second? There is a second, okay. Again, I think I will ask for people to put in the chat if they have a question just on this particular proposed amendment. Is there any discussion on the proposed amendment?
Looks like Mr. Ensminger has a comment.
Mr. Ensminger.
Mr. Ensminger, can you raise your hand?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is not what I would consider a friendly amendment. This is a substantive amendment that I think would require a vote by the body.
Yes, we will have a vote by the body.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, all right. Further discussion?
There's a question from Mr. Arena.
Okay.
Mr. Arena, go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Jane. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Question from Mr. Ross. What was the rationale of FinCom used to favor free cash versus debt? I'm thinking here of the balance in free cash being a consequence of the override passed not many years ago, which is an intended and desirable outcome.
Uh, Mr. Ross?
All right, Mr. Ross. Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Uh, thank you. So, so, Mr. Arena, the, the decision on free cash is given really the balances that we have in place today. It was a much better funding option from the respect as far as the, the funding options available to us versus debt. This was a much more palatable from, from a FinCom perspective.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment? In the chat.
Seeing none, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, are we ready for a vote?
Mr. Moderator, there's a question from Mr. Hayes on how many, what the percentage is for this vote.
Oh, this, for an amendment, it only requires a majority vote. The main motion, when we get there, will require two-thirds vote. So this, this proposed amendment, we will have a, the poll put up and requires a majority vote.
Mr. Moderator, I am ending the poll.
Okay.
And it is 145 to 2. I'm sorry, 145 to 22.
Vote being 145 and affirmative, 22 and the negative. The motion carries, and the, the main motion is amended. We will now return to discussion on the main motion as amended. Further discussion?
Mr. Berman.
Mr. Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Barry Berman, precinct 4. I'm in full support of, of this article. I am a frequent user of the town forest and have parked on Stroud Ave in mud holes many a day. So the idea of having a parking, a lot that's used for parking to get the traffic off of there is most welcoming. I'm also a member of trustees of the reservation, and I can say that I've probably visited two-thirds of the trustee properties all across the state. And every single one of them has a very welcoming and well-marked sign for parking. It's a way to guide people appropriately into these wonderful developments. It's a way to, for people to find them, first of all. And it gets traffic off of the streets. So to have this as an option to, for the town, you know, for the town forest, I think will continue the use, the great usage and the great resource. I think it's an appropriate use of, appropriate use of funds. I think it's great. We're paying for it out of cash, and I'm in full support of the motion.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Ian Brown?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Ian Brown, precinct 8. I would like to make an amendment, if possible, to have buy three lots instead of one. If we're, I, in my, my logic is that one lot, maybe that's 15, 20 parking spaces. As someone who uses the town forest frequently, I can count easily more cars than that that are there. So I think one is insufficient and would suggest three.
All right, I am, I'm thinking that is allowable, but I am then going to ask the Town Council for her opinion. I think it's within the confines, and it's something less than the original vote we took. But let me ask Town Council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I do agree that it's within the four corners of the article, but I do just want to point out that the offer from the developer is limited to Lot 5 only. So to the extent that town meeting votes favorably on acquiring more than just Lot 5 here, let's say Lot 4 and 5, for example, we cannot guarantee that the developer would actually sell us that property. The offer on the table right now from the developer with Meadowbrook's blessing is to sell the town Lot 5 for $450,000, only with minimal setback restrictions as the only condition on the sale.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, it would still be within, in order, but in light of that information, do you still want to make your motion?
I do.
Okay, is there a second? I need a hand. Oh, actually, in the chat, don't, don't raise your hands. Put it in the chat if you want to make a second. I don't want to goof up the order. We have one in chat. Okay, we have a second. Okay, so we have a, a motion on the, a motion on the floor to amend this from 1 to 3. Now, I don't know how the funding is going to work on that. Do we, do we need to change that as well? I would assume we would as part of the amendment.
Mr. Moderator, Town Council? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I also want to clarify that the, Mr. Brown needs to specify clearly which lots he's seeking authorization to, to purchase.
Okay, thank you very much. It's a good point, and also I, you need to put in how much it would cost, or at least an estimate, because I would assume that the, the price for the one lot wouldn't do it. So, Mr. Brown?
I have no idea about the estimate on money, but I would, as far as the three lots go, I would assume that we would go for 5, 4, and 3, right in, in order, not split them up individually.
Okay. All right, unless you change that, the money is going to stay the same, which I just would assume would make it impossible to, to execute.
I just don't know what the figure is.
Yeah.
Right, that's just not info that I have. Like, we could just triple it and assume that would be roughly. I mean, if one costs $450,000, then the next would cost, you know.
Is that the motion you want to make?
But that's just a guess.
Okay, well, that's your motion. Is that the motion you want to make?
Yes, we'll say a million, a million, two.
From free cash.
From free cash.
From free cash. Yeah, I think it already says that. Yeah, okay. Okay, so we'll leave that there for now.
457 times 3.
Yes. Okay.
Points of order from Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Barnes, your point of order?
Mr. Barnes?
I'm sorry. Jonathan Barnes, precinct 5. I guess a question for Town Council or point of order regarding Town Council's comment. I understand that the Meadowbrook has offered, I guess, either all five or one. But would I not be correct in, in understanding that the Town of Reading still retains the, the first refusal if, if any of those lots are sold?
Ms. Reed, yes.
Ms. Moderator, thank you. So I think it might be helpful to just take a step back here. So Meadowbrook and Bancroft, Bancroft is the developer here, entered into a purchase and sale agreement to sell all five lots. The town, under Chapter 61B, Section 9, has an option to step into the shoes of the buyer and purchase all five lots. The case law is clear that we can't, we can't exercise on only one of those lots or two of those lots. We need to step into the shoes of the buyer and buy all five of those lots. Bancroft came to the town and offered the town the ability to buy Lot 5 only for $450,000. Meadowbrook agreed to that. There isn't a mechanism for the town to require Bancroft to sell more than one lot. This is an offer that a private developer put forth. The only thing that the town could do is buy all five or the one lot that's being offered. Does that address the, the town meeting members' question?
Yes, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, again, you've heard the advice from the Town Council, but we will continue debating this in the chat. If you have a question, please put your question in the chat.
Mr. Moderator, we have a point of order from.
Okay.
The developer.
From the developer, okay.
Mr. Mangano.
Mr. Mangano?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Mangano.
Thank you. On behalf of Bancroft Estates, we will not engage in any negotiation beyond the one lot with the town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we had a point of order from Ms. Williams.
Okay.
I was gonna, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was gonna ask if we could ask the developer if this was even an option, but thank you, he spoke up.
Okay. To Ms. Tabauchi's point, yes, it can move forward. The illegality of a, of a motion doesn't preclude town meeting from taking a stand on it. So whether it can work or not, town meeting does have the right to vote on this. Okay, and Mr. Arena, I think you had a point of order too?
Go ahead, Ms.
Alan, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Jane. Could you clarify the outcome then? So town meeting could take a vote tonight that could never be actualized. You'd make commitments that could never be funded.
That, that's what it appears to be true, yes.
And so if, if, let me play this out.
Um, and so, if, if, let me play this out. You voted for three. The developer says no, you now have nothing. Five went down, three's not possible, game over. Is that what town meeting was?
Okay, that, that is actually, you're getting into debating this, but yes.
I'm not, I'm making the logical point. It's a point of order that if you, it would appear that this cuts off debate, or would cut off debate.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Freed?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, Mr. Arena, if the motion um, as drafted on the floor right now for lots five, four, and three for one point three five million were to pass, but the developer is unwilling to sell us additional land, um, I would still take the position that this article authorizes the acquisition of Lot Five and provides sufficient funds to acquire Lot Five at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think the question that would come back to town meeting is you've appropriated additional funds that can't be spent for that purpose, so they would need to be re-appropriated at a future town meeting. But I don't believe that we would be precluded from buying Lot Five only if the motion on the floor were to pass as amended.
But that would assume the price for Lot Five remained the same, and all other conditions were the same, right?
Correct, it would assume that Bancroft's offer, which is good until Wednesday of this week, uh, for Lot Five at four fifty would stay.
And so, if the lot, if the proposal for three expires and that we get passed Wednesday, then there doesn't seem to be a path forward. You follow my logic?
No.
You have a proposal here that the, that the developer doesn't have to take. You have a, 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 a time bomb that goes off on Wednesday. If there's a path through that that gets nothing.
So, point three of this motion authorizes the select board to enter into any agreements necessary to carry out these actions. If the select board, in its discretion, decides that the offer on the table is likely to be the only offer received, they can still vote on Tuesday, in my opinion pursuant to this article, to um, to acquire the lots, to acquire Lot Five. But I, I hear your comment, Mr. Arena, and I do think that the motion on the floor complicates the matter.
Thank you.
Uh, in light of that, I'm willing to withdraw my motion.
Okay, is there any objection to him withdrawing his motion? Please put it in the chat. Not appearing, we will go back to the uh, main motion. We will now go to the uh, hand raising list again. Okay, Ms. Snowdokser?
I thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Linda Snowdokser, Precinct One. Um, I'm very disappointed that we don't have the five lots, but I'd like to speak in favor strongly of purchasing this one lot. Um, I think that having the land is important. Um, Stroud is not feasible, and I would not like to see any possibility of houses and their fertilizer and their other complications encroaching on our very special town forest. Um, there were so many people that spoke eloquently, Ms. Johnson, so thank you so much, Mr. Talbot, Ms. Corey, um, about the importance of protecting our forest. Um, I'd like to strongly support this motion to at least buy this one lot of land. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, further discussion? Mr. Peter Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Brown, Precinct Eight. Um, I, I have several points to make. Um, but before I do, Mr. Moderator, tried to raise this in, in the chat. Um, could you just restate the vote totals from the last vote, please?
Uh, does the town clerk have the vote totals? I believe it was one oh two to sixty-eight.
It was one oh two to sixty-eight, which does not meet two-thirds.
Isn't one oh two, uh, uh, yes and sixty-eight no, sixty-six percent?
It does not meet two-thirds.
If I divide sixty-eight by a hundred and two, I come out with point six, 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 six. Isn't that two-thirds?
Let's go to the calculator.
I have a calculator that's set up in Excel.
The proper math is a hundred and two divided by a hundred and seventy, which is sixty percent.
Thank you. Um, Bob, thanks for correcting me.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so, uh, to, to the issue of whether the town should buy one lot, um, uh, Bob, I'd like to start um, with your vision of the hundred thousand dollars that we allocated on Monday um, for improvements along Stroud Avenue. What, what is your vision for how that money will be spent?
Mr. D, Alashir?
Respectfully, I don't see how that's within the scope of this.
Uh, wasn't that related to parking on Stroud Avenue? That you wanted, in part, the hundred thousand dollars was to help improve parking on Stroud. I mean, you know, to get, to get the cars off of Grove Street and add some kind of parking onto Stroud Avenue. I think it relates because uh, it, it, in my mind, it relates to the amount of parking that would be available for um, access in, into the town forest.
Um, I, I did say that, and I have to say, after the last couple of uh, days and tonight's comments from some of the land use boards, I'm not sure I would be uh, able to go forward with that.
Because car, I, I guess I missed part of that debate at the beginning, so I'm at a loss there, but is, is the argument that cars wouldn't be able to traverse uh, Stroud Avenue and park at the end?
I, I don't want to repeat their arguments, it's just that they, you know, especially conservation made some fairly strong points against what I had proposed.
Um, uh, hold on just a second, we have a point of order, Mr. Halsey.
Okay.
Could you raise your hand, just so we can see it? Okay.
This conversation is drifting away from the main motion, and I think that we need to bring it back.
Good point, it is. Yes, you're right, you're absolutely right. It is getting, it is, it's going far afield. I saw what your original point was, but it's, it's gone far afield. The discussion right now is buying the one lot.
Correct, so I support buying the one lot, and I'll tell you what, how it's related. So, the town has, I've spoken to the town manager about this, there's a significant safety issue of uh, people and da, and uh, pets and young children um, using um, accessing the town forests during uh, uh, times when um, you know, people are going to the compost center. Um, so, significant safety issue, uh, in my mind, there's no sidewalks there. And so, it's imperative, it's imperative that the town takes some action to get the cars off of Grove Street. And, and the, if, if we cannot park uh, uh, on Stroud Avenue, the only option would be to um, purchase this land and, and to use it in part as parking. I, I, however, believe that it is insufficient amount of land for that particular use. I completely support Mr. Berman's comments about, you know, uh, it, what other towns do in terms of, you know, your, when you go to use a resource uh, such as the trustees have or other towns have, you know, the experience of, of going in and parking and signage and, you know, uh, the, you know, is, is just far above what I'm, I'm sorry to say, we currently have. So, I sup, I completely support the purchase of this one lot, thank you.
Okay, we have a point of order, Ms. Wiggins?
Hi, Teresa Wiggins, uh, Precinct Eight. Um, I'm just wondering, uh, since this is still the discussion about the available land, um, all, all speaking members are supposed to disclose a conflict of interest, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
On, on any articles.
Okay, Mr. Halsey did not disclose the point, uh, conflict of interest.
Okay, further discussion?
Let's see. Joseph Carnahan.
Mr. Carnahan?
Uh, yes, uh, Joseph Carnahan, Precinct Six, and I would like to move the question.
Okay, that is, requires a two-thirds vote, and it is non-debatable. So, if I could ask the poll to be put up? We had twenty-six, I believe twenty-six hands up.
That's correct.
Mr. Moderator, I'm ending debate.
Okay.
Ending the poll.
All right.
It's a one thirty-four yes and twenty-eight no.
Okay, a hundred and thirty-four in the affirmative, twenty-eight in the negative, the motion carries, and debate has ended. We will now move to a vote, and I have had a request uh, to um, for a roll call. Let's see, it was Mr. John Sasso. I need, let's, uh, lower all the hands before I ask for the, the twenty people?
Yep, hold on a second. Please don't raise your hand yet, folks.
Okay, we all set?
We're all set.
Okay, if you want to have a roll call, please raise your hand. All right, the, we have only eleven people, so we will have a standard vote. Okay, uh, this requires a two-thirds vote. We will put the poll up. And this is voting on the one lot option.
Um, Mr. Moderator, there's a request to know who, what, who called for the roll call.
I, I said that already, it was Mr. John Sasso.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, ending the poll.
Okay.
We have one twenty-one to forty.
Okay, the vote being a hundred twenty-one in the affirmative and forty in the negative, the motion carries. Uh, we have a point of order by, I see, Mr., Mr. Brandt?
Um, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Brandt, Precinct Eight. Um, this, this question about multiple motions on one article, can I ask who's permitted to make motions? Um, and are there additional motions allowed to be made on this article at this point in time?
Uh, no longer, because we have, we have voted the main motion, so we have, we have exhausted that. Okay.
We already had multiple main, we already had multiple main motions.
Right, and each one was like lower than the other one before, so we are now, we, we are now locked in at the one. We can't go back and, and do another one. Uh, Mr. Pacino? Mr. Pacino, did you have a point of order?
I'm here, I'm here, just got unmuted. Um, on the poll, there was not an option to abstain, um, which there was in the previous one. I wish to record my vote as abstaining, please.
Okay, as noted, okay, thank you. All right, uh, next up is um,
Mr. Garcia.
Mr., Mr. Garcia, where is? I don't see that out there.
He's had his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, Mr. Garcia, I see it. Mr. Garcia?
Right, thank you. Foster Garcia, Precinct Four. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I assume you were mean to adjourn until Monday evening?
Correct.
Correct. Is there a second? Second, okay, this is non-debatable, but it only requires a majority vote. So, um, we have all the hands lowered, we can, uh, actually, we just, we'll call for a poll on this. Please put the poll up. Okay, this is motion to adjourn until Monday evening.
Mr. Moderator, I've ended the poll. It's one thirty-nine yes and twenty-five no.
The vote being a hundred thirty-nine in the affirmative and twenty-nine in the negative, the motion carries, and this town meeting stands adjourned until Monday evening.